Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Lake County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. Today is March 12th, and we're going to start our meeting with a couple moments of silence. We have one from Supervisor Green.
Yes, thank you. I'd like a moment of silence for Edward Passata, who passed away last Sunday, March 3rd, at age 88. Ed was a past Commodore and also served as port captain for the Lakeport Yacht Club for many years, and he also served in the U.S. Marine Corps. Please hold his wife Shelby and their extended family in your thoughts. A celebration of life will be held later this spring.
And I also have a moment of silence. I believe it was on Friday, March 1st, our community lost Robert DeWalt. Robert DeWalt was an active participant in our senior center down in Highland Senior Center. He has a lifelong experience of working with concert series. He helped out with our concert series in the city of Clear Lake. He was also a part of PEG TV for quite a long time, and unfortunately, passed away on March 1st, has passed the torch to his son for Thomas DeWalt, who works with us on PEG. But this is very close to a lot of our community and close to a lot of our committee groups as well, so want to hold him in our thoughts and our prayers. Supervisor Crandall, not sure if I asked you last time, but if you could please, if you could please lead us into play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go ahead and keep going on our agenda. Do we have any extra items from staff or board members that did not make it on the posted agenda?
We do not.
Okay, and seeing none from board members, we'll go ahead and move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that any board member wishes to pull for further discussion or further future agendas? I see none. Let's go ahead and open it up for anyone within the public that wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda. I see no hands in the chamber and no hands on Zoom, so bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the consent agenda as posted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. We're going to move on to our 9:02 a.m. item, public input. You'll have three minutes to speak on anything not related to an item on our agenda. If it is on the agenda, please wait for that item to come up. I do have Tracy McMahon, if we can start there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tracy McMahon, and my husband and I live at 4732 Foothill Drive, where we own the property here in beautiful Lucerne, California, District 3. On February 4th, a storm hit our area and took out trees, two power poles, and a transformer. For the most part, everything has been repaired and restored. However, cleanup still remains in question pertaining to the wires that lay on the ground, as well as dangle from a connection at the pole and reach the ground. To date, there has been little to no activity other than an incident this past Wednesday when a garbage service was headed down Arden Drive. It snagged the dangling wires and pulled them down to the ground. PG&E came out and removed the dangling wire from the roadway, Arden Drive, and pulled it towards the corner of Arden and Foothill just outside our fence and left it dangling there in our view, which looks out over our lake. PG&E also put up some yellow caution tape on the wires above the roadway, Arden Drive, which read "Caution: Hazardous Material." Not quite sure why the tape was not placed there before now. FedEx, UPS, and propane delivery services also travel Arden Drive and could also be at risk of snagging these low-hanging wires as well. Our concern is for the safety of families and wildlife, as these wires laying on the ground pose a tripping hazard and a safety issue. A school bus stop resides only steps from these wires as well. Today, I walked up Arden and noted that the drainage ditch is full of limbs and debris and is blocking the flow of water to the lake, which could cause it to possibly back up and flood neighboring residents. It would be great if you could please look into this matter for us, and perhaps with your assistance, we can all find out who the wires belong to and when they'll get removed and repaired as necessary. Please do let us know how we can assist in the restoration of our area to what it looked like prior to this storm. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else have a public comment, please?
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name is Karen Mantelli, and I live in the vicinity of where Tracy just spoke. I live off of Roland, which is, connects down to Arden Way. I go for walks down there all the time, and the storm brought heavy winds and rain, and that caused that poles to be torn down and to break down, and then they came and repaired it. When I walked down there right after the storm, I talked to some of the PG&E personnel that was there, and I jokingly asked them, I realize this is a county unmaintained road, if they would be able to put in a little bit of gravel or be able to straighten out the area of the roadway. And the supervisor that I talked to informed me that they can only repair or take care of and clean up what they have left or what they have disturbed. The wires that are laying there still after installing two new poles are still there. That was caused by them. They took those wires down, and those wires are still there. There are five families that live in that area. Three of them have children. I spoke to one of the homeowners there, and her six-year-old son was just out playing, as children do, and he tripped over one of those wires. I don't know the length of the feet of where those wires are, but to me, they do pose a safety issue, and I am asking if the board can look into who can help take care of this. It appears that PG&E did cut those wires down, and when they repaired and put those new poles up. So I'm asking if someone somehow or your staff can look into that. I did place a call to the Office of Emergency Services. I left a message last week with someone, but I've not had a phone call returned about this. So I feel that the safety and the welfare, which is what you govern of our county, is not being taken care of, and I ask if someone and your body or your staff could look into taking care of this hazard that is in our area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments?
Yeah. I'm in the district. It's my district, so what we'll do is we have a new liaison for PG&E as well, so if we can touch base, I know my cards are out there. Let's touch base, call me, or I can, I'm in the area of Lucerne as well, so I can, if you text me or email me or call me, we'll set something up, and we'll get ahold of PG&E.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please. Please, come on up. Yeah, to the microphone.
Anyway, good morning. I'm Tammy Majewski, and I was staying at the homeless shelter there in Lakeport, and I got hit, and my four tires got slashed, and there was nothing on camera. I never hit the supervisor. They said I did. I've been living in my car now for about a month, month and a half, and what's going on there is unbiased. And I asked her, I've never hit the supervisor, and they don't have cameras outside to show who slashed my tires and hurt my car. And cops came out, and the cops told me to take a cooldown, so I took a cooldown, and they came out and they said, you can stay. So I stayed, and then four days later, I was told I hit the supervisor. I never hit the supervisor. I'd be foolish, and I'm 56-years-old. I just don't do that. And I said, well, where's the proof? And they said, there's no proof, and I was exited. So I have been living in my car. I have pretty much a broken back and a brain tumor. I'm scared for my life out here, and they know that, and they won't let me back in. And I need accommodations. And what's going on at that homeless shelter is there's a lot of dope smoking out there, a lot of fighting, and I, you know, for 2.4 million, you would think there'd be cameras, so I'm going through my car insurance and things like that. But in the meantime, I'm homeless, and that shelter was, you know, a way for me to get on my feet. And I asked, where's the proof of me hitting supervisor, which I would never do? And it's just common sense. And four days later, they told me to leave. So I don't know how to get accommodated.
Okay. If that's the end of your comment, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And it looks like Supervisor Green, did you want to provide some direction?
You've probably seen me out at the shelter. I do have business cards out there as well, if you don't have one already, and please reach out to me. I'm obviously in a meeting today.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to go to the bar. I didn't know what to do. I'm stuck in the car.
Yeah, we understand that.
And I'm scared.
You can make the comment. We just literally can't talk about it beyond that.
Yes, sir. I will talk to you, and your card's outside.
Yes.
Give you a call. Okay. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. I believe we have one more public comment. If we have more, you still, there's still more time.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Angela DePalma Dow. I work in Water Resources as program coordinator, and I wanted to make an announcement that this Wednesday, we are holding a Water Quality Wednesday. It'll be about the Birds of Clear Lake. So these are open, free forums. They're available online through Zoom, Facebook, and also we'll be going out on PEG TV Live. And so we haven't had a Water Quality Wednesday in a while. This is probably about our sixth one. We cover things like shoreline management, cyanobacteria, algae in the lake. We had one on Clear Lake Hitch in January 2021. And so, yes, this, all the information's here on our flyer, and we're really excited to have guest speakers at the Birds of Clear Lake from Donna Makowitz. She's part of Red Bud Audubon Society. And then we'll have Introduction to Grebes and the Ecology of Grebes by Dr. Scott Butterfield and Dr. Floyd Hayes. And Floyd Hayes has actually been doing research in Clear Lake for many, many years, turtles, grebes, birds. And Dr. Scott Butterfield and Dr. Hayes are going to be proposing a Blue Ribbon Committee project to use grebes as indicators of water quality and restoration in Clear Lake. So we'll get a little tidbit about that project and any questions that people have about birds or about the relationship with birds and Clear Lake and the surrounding environment. This is a great forum to get some expert opinions, as well as some really cool photographs and videos of birds out on Clear Lake. I have some hard copy flyers here. We have distributed this information via social media, through some ads, and then posted flyers up around the courthouse. And hopefully, everybody that, I mean, if anybody wants to attend, we do have the webinar ID. We won't give out links for this to prevent unwanted attendance. But yeah, we're really excited. We haven't had a Water Quality Wednesday in a while, so I just wanted to put this on the attention of the board and the public, and thank you so much for giving me time to present this.
Just a quick clarification, virtual only.
Yeah, these are virtual only. They're at 6:00 p.m., so hopefully, it's after work, people can attend. We do it virtual, so we can record it. So actually, all of our Water Quality Wednesdays are available on our YouTube channel, so if you go to County of Lake Water Resource Department, go scroll down to the section that's Water Quality Wednesdays, they're all available there. We also, since it'll be on Facebook Live for the County of Lake, that's a permanent record there, recording. So that's why we do it, we do it virtual.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? I see none in Zoom room and in the chamber, so we'll go ahead and move on to our 9:03 a.m. item, pet of the week, and I believe we have Officer Copus today.
Sounds like that guy's thirsty.
Did you guys run here?
Hi, my name is Officer Copus of Lake County Animal Care Control. Today, I have brought Sandy. She is our, one of our seniors. She's 10-years-old. She came to us as a stray, but she's been a really good asset with us. She's been very mellow, very good. She's, you could pet her all over, you can love up on her. She's totally a couch potato. She'd be good in any home, even with children. She's good with small dogs and large dogs. She's partially blind, and we think maybe partially deaf as well, but she has a lot of life left in her. We are located at 4949 Hellbrush Drive in Lakeport behind the county jail, and if you guys just want to call, we have 707-263-0278 for the phone number. If you have any questions, concerns, or anything like that, you can always give us a call.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our next item, 6.3, 9:04 a.m. New and Noteworthy at the Library. And I do see that we have Christopher Veitch on our attendee list. If we can move him over, please. Morning.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me a moment to talk about what's new and noteworthy at the library. Just getting my background set up here so that we can talk about our book for this week. So this month, in honor of Women's History Month, I want to highlight The Women by Kristin Hannah. Kristin Hannah is an award-winning author of more than 20 historical fiction novels. Her latest novel, The Women, reveals the contributions and sacrifices of American military nurses in the Vietnam War. It follows 21-year-old Frankie, a California native, who inspired, who was inspired to enlist after her brother left for the war. It follows her for over 20 years, from landing in Vietnam with very little training, to returning home to an America that doesn't recognize or understand her military service. Kelly Dykes from the Southern Bookseller Review writes, "Like most of Kristin Hannah's novels, The Women not only taught me about a time period, it made me feel it. She somehow manages to make you feel like you have experienced an entire life, full of rich experiences with everything explored. The Women by Kristin Hannah is incredibly popular in our library, with over 500 people waiting for the 275 copies we have available through our system. You can request The Women or other titles through our online library catalog, which has the combined resources of Lake, Sonoma, and Mendocino County library systems. Requesting items is completely free to library patrons, and items are sent to your local branch for you to pick up. We also have more titles available on display for Women's History Month in our branches, so please come view those as well." And then here I have a picture of our beautiful carpet at Red Bud Library, because I want to announce that starting March 18th, our Red Bud Library is getting new carpets, but will remain open throughout construction with limited service. Patrons can still return books, check out holds, and get help from library staff, but library events, browsing the collection, and access to public computers will be limited throughout the installation, which is planned to last for about three weeks. Our Middletown Library is also undergoing minor construction with a reconfiguration of its circulation desk, but we don't believe this will impact any services at this time. And I just want to thank everyone in advance for being patient with the disruption during construction.
Well, thank you so much for letting us know that that's going to happen.
No, no problem. And you can find information about our other events and resources on our website at library.lakcountyc.gov, or come visit your local library branch in Lakeport, Clear Lake, Middletown, Upper Lake, or on the Bookmobile. So thanks again for listening to What's New and Noteworthy at the Library.
Thank you so much, Mr. Veitch. Any comments or questions before we go? All right, appreciate that. Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 6.4, 9:05 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Commending Operation Tango Mike for 21 Years of Service in Supporting Our Military Personnel Deployed Around the World. Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah.
That's not the one, but we'll go together?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is a proclamation commending Operation Tango Mike for 21 years of service in supporting our military personnel deployed around the world. Whereas, Operation Tango Mike has supported deployed military personnel through our Operation Enduring Freedom, Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation New Dawn, Operation Onward Liberty, Operation Odyssey Lightning, Operation Inherent Resolve, and Operation Freedom Sentinel. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike has shipped more than 26,000 care packages to deployed personnel and assisted multitudes of military families. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike coordinates annual collection and distribution of Christmas gifts and school supplies for military families. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike has coordinated and hosted many welcome-home celebrations and ceremonies for returning troops. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike has assisted in honoring three of Lake County's fallen heroes in the global war on terror. And whereas, the Secretary of Defense has recognized families and community members as the power behind the power. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike fills a crucial role in supporting family members and loved ones of our armed forces and provides a compassionate community and incalculable moral support to families and loved ones. And whereas, Operation Tango Mike will mark 21 years of unwavering support for military personnel and families on March 12th, 2024. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby commend Operation Tango Mike for 21 years of service in supporting our military personnel deployed throughout the world, passed and adopted this 12th day of March, 2024.
I'd like to thank the board for this recognition and to say, for those that don't know, Operation Tango Mike is an all-volunteer nonprofit, no paid staff, and I believe that 21 years of continuous support of our troops is a real testament to our community. It costs over $5,000 a month to ship 100 care packages, and here we are, marking 21 years, and it's a blessing to the troops. They'll tell you that. We receive thank yous from them and their families, and if it weren't for the strength of this community supporting us, we would never get here. I tell people, you can measure demographics. I know they talk about the issues in Lake County and the income in Lake County, but there's something you can never measure on any chart, and that's heart, and this community has it, and we're truly blessed. Thank you.
I just wanted to add as well that I attend these as often as I can. If I don't have conflicts, I'll be there this Thursday because we're going to, right, it's this Thursday?
21st.
21st, or next Thursday. But I, just keeping my Thursdays open in case, because I want to make this one. And I, my uncle, who was in the first Gulf War in the 90s, it, pre, you know, Tango Mike, did receive packages and always talked about that with me as an adolescent when I was in, you know, middle school. And then I go and I get packages like this, and then, so when I come back and see that Ginny's doing this with Tango Mike and all the volunteers, it's just, it's special, and I know the feeling. I know what it takes to receive this, the joy it feels. And so for 21 years, just doing this continuously and, you know, what's the word, like just grinding and trying to figure out how to get donations and whatnot, so I, I just encourage anyone that can contribute to this, please do so, because it's, it really does help, and supporting our deployed soldiers is very important, because it could be that gift that keeps them going that day, or even for another four months, or they tell you, oh, hey, guess what? We're going back in February, and then February comes, and they're like, oh, wait, now it's June, so, so just anything helps for morale, and I appreciate that you do this, and I always want to be a part of contributing to that, so. And I'm bringing my uncle this time. He's, I'm putting a leash on him and making him come.
So I met Ginny in Operation Tango Mike when I was doing interviews for PEG TV, 2010, 2011, so a long time ago, and I said something then, and it's still what I feel today. Operation Tango Mike is the perfect example of paying it forward. There is no expectations of anything in return. It is showing that we recognize that you're out there doing the work to keep us free. It's recognizing that the community is still acknowledging the work that people are doing overseas, fighting for our freedoms, and if we don't do those types of things, whether it's Operation Tango Mike or any other agency, to not have those expectations of something in return, then we're not teaching people what community actually means. We should be doing things for the community because it's the right thing to do, and then people will want to reimburse that towards the community, not towards the individual. And those people who get those care packages, they understand what community means at that point. They understand what it means to re-contribute when they come back home as well. And I just think it's, we got to keep those examples going. Thank you for keeping it going for 21 years, and we should all lead that, with that example in mind. So thank you. Any other comments from the board? Picture time. Don't, 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 don't.
Talking smack.
Pancake breakfast, what's the address?
Presbyterian Church.
Presbyterian Church in Kelseyville, Pancake Breakfast.
Hot Cakes for Heroes, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m.
Hot Cakes for Heroes, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m.
And I believe that you'll be taking a certain number of copies of the proclamation to put in the boxes on the 21st.
Right, that's.
Oh, you're going to take care of that?
Yeah, do you want me to make those and bring them?
Sure. Save some, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Better list that down now.
All right, moving on to item 6.5, our 9:07 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Designated March 17th through 23rd, 2024 as National Agriculture Week. Vice Chair Crandall?
All right.
And please come on up. I know we have a group.
This is a very important proclamation, and for me, it's even more special, because when I, when I took the AgVenture class with, you know, the group, and I didn't really understand a lot about ag, I'll be honest. I grew up not doing anything on ag or nothing, so I, you know, I might have picked walnuts with a buddy of mine in Upper Lake, but I didn't really know what I was doing, you know, so. And every time I went to pear sheds, I was already working at Treasure Cove, so I didn't get a chance to work, you know, at scolipacking or anything like that. However, I knew a lot of people that did, but I didn't know what it takes to, you know, to be a part of something so special, and so I really am glad that I get to be a part of this proclamation, and I'll read it for you. All right. So this proclamation is designating the week of March 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as National Agricultural Week in Lake County. Whereas, California is a national leader in the farming industry with its production of over 400 different commodities and contributing over $50 billion in high-quality food, fiber, and flour products annually. Over a third of the country's vegetables and 2/3 of the country's fruits and nuts are grown in California. And whereas, Lake County farmers claim a long and rich agricultural history, starting in the 1850s, when early settlers planted the first vineyards, followed it in 1890 with the planting of the first Bartlett pears. Crops have flourished in our fertile valleys, hillsides, and ecosystems that were fostered and stewarded by the local Native American Pomo tribes for generations since time immemorial previous to 1850. And whereas, today, Lake County's agricultural industry continues to be a vital economic engine, providing jobs and contributing to a strong tax base, bringing more than $83 million in value of its major crops of pears, wines, wine grapes, sorry, and walnuts, as well as increasing contribution of olives, nursery, livestock, field, and seed crops, and vegetable crops. And whereas, Lake County's farmers take pride in their land as stewards that contribute to health, beauty, productivity, and quality of our county's water, soil, air, and forest resources for the benefit of all California and Lake County residents. And whereas, Lake County's agriculture industry fosters a deep caring for the land and our community. It contributes to our local economy, ensures the production of safe food, gives back to the local charities and organizations, is a support system to our way of life, and continues to embrace education and scientific knowledge to further agricultural advances. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the Lake County, County of Lake, does hereby proclaim March 17th through 23rd, 2024, as National Agriculture Week in Lake County, and celebrates the achievements of more than 1 million people who worked throughout the year in Lake County and California's number-one industry, passed and adopted this 12th day of March, 2024. Signed, Chair of the Board, Bruno Sabatier. Signed, Chair of the Board, Bruno Sabatier.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'd like to thank EJ and Bruno for working with me on this proclamation. As, as many of us may know, agriculture is a really crucial part of our community here in Lake County. And there's something really special about the agriculture community. Bruno mentioned earlier about heart. And I think that that's something that the agriculture community also shares. You see it a lot in emergencies, but the agriculture community really supports our community as a whole and shows up big when it matters. So I think that it's really important that we continue to support, honor, and protect agricultural ways of life, tradition, and culture as we continue to move forward. Thank you.
I'd like to hear a little bit more about the FFA students we have with us.
I was just gonna say, we have a few guests here, so I'll take a minute to introduce a couple of people that we have here joining us. So over here to my left, we have Katie Evans. She is the President of our Lake County, California Women for Ag Chapter, and she's also a board member for Lake County Farm Bureau. And then we have three wonderful Upper Lake FFA students. We have Jamie Zimmerstein, who's the Upper Lake FFA Chapter President, Lupita Sanchez, who's the Upper Lake FFA Secretary, and Ruby Worm, who is the Upper Lake FFA Sentinel. The, all three of these students are graduating seniors. Jamie and Lupita will represent Upper Lake FFA at the upcoming State FFA Leadership Conference in Sacramento. And Ruby Worm just earned her state FFA degree last weekend. So I'd really like to thank these three students for showing up today. Agricultural education is a huge, huge, huge asset to our community and produces well-rounded students who go out into the community, whether they end up working in agriculture or not, and, and truly do make a difference. So thank you to those three students and to Upper Lake FFA and Erica Boomer to lending them out to me this morning. And then we have Tony Scully, who's kind of hiding back there. But Tony is a longtime CWA member and is also an involved Farm Bureau member, who it really exemplifies what it means to have heart and to be in the agriculture industry. So then we've got Terry Derenick, who is a champion of Lake County agriculture and has worked on many AVA applications, grant applications, and has really shined a light on Lake County agriculture. And then last, but certainly not least, we have Ms. Sharon Zoller, who is our past statewide CWA President and involved Farm Bureau member. And I could go on and on about her achievements, so. Also, all three of these ladies, as of April, will be recognized as Common Threads North Awards winners, which, Common Threads North Award winners are ladies who have exemplified service and achievement in the agriculture industry and been champions for Ag. So really special that we have all three of them here today as well. So thank you.
I just want to say how inspiring it is to see all these women spanning the generations here. I think it's incredible, and I appreciate all of you coming and making the time to be here, because it's an important day and wonderful to see. Was it four generations we have here? Yeah, I think so. Wonderful.
Yeah. Women's Month and Ag.
Yeah.
Go Women and Ag.
There you go. I just want to make a comment as a Board of Supervisors coming on, the Ag Venture classes put on, you know, I was able to go through that with, you know, seeing everything that Tony did, seeing everything that's done in the agricultural community here for Lake County. It's just a great educational tool to understand what is happening and the powerful industry that Ag is here in Lake County. So I appreciate that. And I was educated, just like EJ. I picked walnuts as a young kid, because you get three, four bucks a bag or whatever. So we're making money. But understanding the opportunities, the job creation, and then obviously following along with the FFA program that is just phenomenal in Lake County through all the schools, I just want to thank you very much for that, and thank you for that educational process that you allowed me to be a part of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we take pictures? Just want to thank the leadership of our Ag industry here. There's been a lot of difficult conversations lately, and I want to say that the conversation has been helped out by the leadership in Ag. I really feel that we're looking for common ground and we're looking for ways to move forward. Just appreciate what it means for all of us here in Lake County. So thank you so much. Oh, please, come on up. Sorry, I wasn't looking out that direction.
Thanks, everyone, for being here. And I just, on behalf of Blue Zones Project, our work is to help make the healthier choice the easier choice. And thank you for everyone in the trenches and for the board, your leadership. You make it really easy for us to support promoting local food systems, strengthening them, Ag. We really appreciate all that you do, and we appreciate everyone who's here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we do a photo op? All right, let's take a picture.
Would you mind taking one of my friends also? Here, you ladies can hold us.
Find a window, Tony. I got you guys.
Okay, ready? I think we have everybody. Ready, here we go. Let's do one more.
Don't go anywhere, I'm gonna join in, sorry.
Yeah. Get in.
Fiercely self-help.
Okay, so everybody still seeing the asterisk? There we go, thank you. Got it.
Hold on, if I don't call it, now.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to our next and last proclamation, 6.6, 9:09 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Designating the month of March, 2024 as American Red Cross Month in Lake County. And we have two Red Cross members, please come on up.
Well, thank you for joining, Nick and Gabby. Where's Shannon today? She's saying... All right. Hey, Shannon. Our Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California Proclamation Designating the month of March, 2024 as American Red Cross Month in Lake County. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion in Lake County and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas the generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advanced a humanitarian legacy of Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who notably dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. And whereas today, the kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step through the Red Cross to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need through voluntary and selfless contributions, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid and CPR, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global disaster. And whereas, we recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need. And we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby proclaim March, 2024 as Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens of Lake County to reach out and support its humanitarian crisis, or mission. Passed and adopted this 12th day of March, 2024. And although Nick and Gabby are not part of the normal, I don't want to even want to say normal, but the deployments that come during our times of need, they're here doing proactive work, which is really incredible. And this is a brand-new program that we're gonna hear a little bit more about later on. But we have really received so much aid and comfort and support from people all over the world during our times of need. And that's why it's so important that we have this proclamation done every March. A lot of people don't know that when people deploy here, they use their vacation time from their jobs, or they're retired. It's great sacrifices that they make to come here and support, or any place that they go and support during deployment. And we would be lost without the support. And the incredible work that we're gonna hear that this team is doing is, is the proactive measures in response to our climate crisis. And we've been selected, as we'll learn more, as just a handful of communities across the country to receive this because of everything that we've been through together. So I really want to thank these two. You guys have been doing incredible work this last year, looking forward to many more projects that are finally coming to fruition and being activated. But also so much gratitude for everyone that's come in the past to support us in our time of need.
Thank you. We were gonna have a volunteer here, and he sustained an injury this weekend, so he wasn't able to make it. But I do want to say a few words about donations and the Red Cross. There's, you know, three main ways to donate to the American Red Cross. That's your blood, money, or your time, and time being the most important one. To Supervisor Pisca's point, that when people deploy out here, they're giving away a part of their life that they're never gonna give back, but they've donated that to helping people. And that's Lake County, that's across the nation. So March is Red Cross Month. Get out and help support our mission.
Thanks. I love a presentation. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, I just want to highlight how thankful I know the county is as well. I know, all around, in times of need, you all are there. I know that one of the groups I was working with and had a meeting at last night, the Lucerne Community, Lucerne Alpine Senior Center, we had our community meeting there last night, and they talked about how they work with you all. And that's very special, it's very helpful. They are in really high need. They are always a beacon of hope for people in the, in the Lucerne community. So, so I'd like to just give you all props for that, so.
Any other comments? Supervisor Gray? I thought you had some.
Well, I'll do it. I'm just going back to the times of disaster, and I forget if it was a rocky fire, a valley fire. As important as Red Cross is, during those events, I remember there was some Red Cross hesitancy, right? And people that would turn to local groups, or, you know, people who confuse the immediate need for support here with long-term funding commitments to Red Cross. And I was always stricken by that. So I think this is a good time, when stuff is not burning, to remind people that this is the time we support Red Cross. We strengthen you now, so that you can be prepared for the next disasters coming our way. So if there was anybody in our community that suffered from Red Cross hesitancy during our deepest, darkest wildfire responses, number one, ooh, let's not do that. But number two, let's remind ourselves just how important it is to strengthen you now, when we can all catch our breath and commit to be prepared for the next disasters. So thank you, thank you for being here today.
Yeah, same. I just want to thank Red Cross for, you know, all the, all the disasters we've been through, obviously, and whether it's folks coming in to do the volunteering, but I know we have a lot of local folks that signed up, year after year of those, and created a little bit of workforce here in Lake County, too. You know, so just want to thank you for the partnership, the responsiveness, and ultimately, as you said, all over the nation, you guys respond to any of these disasters and how important that is. Especially after the devastating fires, it was phenomenal. But you were here for many other instances, too. When someone loses their home, you get them into a hotel for temporary shelter to figure that situation out. And every one of those opportunities that you put out to somebody is one less thing they have to worry about at that point. So completely support Red Cross. You make your own decision where you want to do donations. You hear people making their own decisions. But from my experience with myself, even with our tribal nation and the partnerships we've built, it really helps us move forward, just to take care of the community in whichever way we can. And Red Cross always steps up, so greatly appreciate that.
And so if folks want to volunteer, because you can register now and you can go through the training, you can be an event-based volunteer, which I've done many times, but you also can be proactively ready for deployment. And so, Nick, do you want to talk about how people could sign up?
Yeah, to that point about donations, time, blood, money, all that stuff can be found at redcross.org, or call 1-800-RED-CROSS to begin that process. So if you have some time, and it's, we'll take anything you're able to give to the, to our mission. So redcross.org or 1-800-RED-CROSS.
Great, thanks. Great.
One of the things that I know I always think of, because when we have major emergencies, you're not the only group that shows up. Everyone, we're highlighted, unfortunately, and so everyone's aware of our need. It's the, it's the need that we don't get to highlight for. So the individual house fires, I make calls to our fire district or to our city, saying, hey, there was a fire last night, what can I do? Don't worry, Red Cross took care of it. You guys are always there, and I think most people don't see that. And I know that it's, to me, it's kind of the underlying work that you do all the time, that people don't see versus the obvious that they see when we have an absolute disaster, which is appreciated that you're there for those, too. But I know that the 365 days a year, you guys are there for everything else as well, and that's not to be forgotten and absolutely appreciated. So thank you so much. Picture time. Please don't leave. You're next.
I know.
What was that? I was thinking, if it's a presentation, do you guys want to take a seat right up here with us? Might as well get comfy. I'm not sure how long the presentation is, but... So we're gonna move on to our next item, 6.7, our 9:10 a.m. Consideration of Presentation of the American Red Cross Community Adaptation Program. And Supervisor Pisca, do you want to introduce the item?
We were just talking a little bit about it. So I'm, you know, this is a proactive team that we've been selected for, and I think they, you have more of the details, so why don't you just take it from there?
All right. Jack?
So, thanks for having us today. This is a great opportunity for us to kind of chat about, since our team started in July of 2022, to kind of go over a little bit of the selection process and why Lake County was selected for this program, and then how our work has translated into action in Lake County. So we'll start off by introducing ourselves, as, again, we've kind of done it back-to-back here now. But my name's Nick Widmer. I'm our manager for our Community Adaptation Program here in Lake County. Sitting next to me is Gabby Perez, who's one of our coordinators. And then we have Pastor Shannon Kimboth, who is our second coordinator, who is unfortunately sick today, but I'm sure most of you know her. So again, our team started back in July of 2022 to really highlight this fact here. So as seen by the slide, last year in 2023, there were $38 billion disasters across the United States. And the Red Cross has been involved in responding to these disasters for, you know, 100 years at this point. And what we're seeing is more of a continuous response model for our organization, rather than, you know, the trucks, the airplanes, everything, we're facilitating moving all of these resources to each individual disaster. How can we be more proactive for those communities to respond and be more resilient in times of disasters? So that not just the American Red Cross response burden is lessened, but overall, all of the community organizations that we alluded to earlier that are coming into these communities to support them in their times of need, how can we raise that degree of resilience for those communities, so that the organizations have a, they're helping the community as opposed to taking over those responses just themselves? So we do that by really highlighting these two outcomes. So our program boils down to this, and it really comes out of an idea that really came about, it started with the valley fire here, and then began and was kind of incubated in Northern California specifically, when we had these devastating wildfires and people sought shelter, that when the Red Cross, we do sheltering very well. And that's, that's our thing. And as soon as that person steps out the door, how do we know that they're onto a better recovery system? That they're onto something better that next day? That the devastation of evacuation didn't hinder their recovery process long-term? And so that... So outcome number one is increase the number of families who can safely stay at home, improve the conditions for those who are forced from their homes, and accelerate access to healthy and stable living environments. So I call this one, this is our evacuation side of things. So this is the vulnerability part of it, is if some, what are the factors that somebody, let's say that they are not in an evacuation zone necessarily, but they don't have their power on, they aren't able to access some of the systems that they've been relying on for a long time. So in those times of, we wouldn't call it necessarily a declared evacuation disaster, but it's a disaster for that individual, right? They aren't able to rely on that system. So in our outcome number one objectives, we really do take a look at what are those systems? How can we strengthen those systems? And how do we support those partners that are interacting in that system to make sure that they're able to provide those services in times where that system is stressed? And then outcome number two is really reduce the number of families that fall into poverty after being forced from their homes by extreme weather. This is more to that ultimate fact of, or that ultimate story of how do we know that they're onto a better tomorrow the moment they step out of that door? And so outcome number two is really all about when we frame our social service system in the context of disaster, of evacuation, of, you know, valley fire, of rocky fire, of these kind of things that Lake County is very familiar with, how do we take a look at what is the system that those individuals fall back into? How can we make sure that they're lifted up through that system and don't fall down deeper into whatever was ailing them or affecting them before that time of disaster? So how do we do that? That's a great question. I think a lot of our supervisors here have worked with us on different projects, and they each look different. You know, they have a different lens, they have a different goal every time, but they all reach back to those two outcomes. And so our program is blessed to have seven different tactics that we can really rely on. Two of them are similar, and that's really about bringing subject matter expertise into the county, to our partners. We'll hear about, from one of our partners here a little later, that was able to utilize some of that subject matter expertise. We're able to provide Red Cross training. So over the past couple of weeks and over the next few weeks, we've provided four CPR and AED trainings around the county, and then paired that with a bilingual AED unit for those locations. And these are co-located with our Resilient Hub locations that the county sustainability has been working on. And our volunteer exchange, this is something that really gets to that point of community first and not flying in Red Cross volunteers or flying in volunteers from anywhere else. It's really how can we make volunteerism a key factor in our communities? So that in times of disaster, that it's not just that the willingness is more there, it's that how can we harness that? How is our system designed so that we can take in everybody that wants to help and utilize them effectively? Data sharing and analysis, this is something that, you know, Bruno alluded to this earlier, that the Red Cross has a lot of things we don't necessarily reach out and shout and say that we, you know, we don't get commended on all the time. And one of those things is the data that we're able to take in, that we're able to share, that we're able to utilize to help us achieve some of these goals of community resilience. And so we're able to take some of that information and give it back to our partners and help them write grants, help them report out on some of their statistics that they might need. And then the last two have to do with monetary resources. So direct procurement of equipment, we just provided a generator up to the Little Red Schoolhouse on Cobb, and that was something that we really identified it as a very easy fix for a very specific need. And it was very easily defended as a great option for that community to have somewhere that had resilient power. And then the last one is providing monetary grants. You know, this, our program, I don't think should be defined as a monetary program by any means. We're not just a funder. It's really about the collaboration and then utilizing these resources to help those partners to achieve their goals. And so I'll pass it off to Gabby here to talk about some of our partnerships.
And to kind of, hello, everyone. My name is Gabrielle Perez. I go by Gabby because I'm not in trouble all the time. And this is the slide that I would like to end with, because collaboration and coalitions is what we are all about. And we are very proud to say, an honor to be a part of this groups of folks that have been very kind with us, just letting us kind of support them and help them throughout. Not saying that these groups weren't here before by any means, and that's why we are here, because we want to enhance this response. Not one agency has all the answers, and we are very aware of that. And we recognize that it's the community and the day-to-day responding to these continuous activities, right, that are happening, like home fires, but also the wildfires, right, and things like that. So this is what is going to make us stronger, and this is where we are putting all our efforts into. So we are very, very proud to be a part of other ones that we have not mentioned here, such as the Food Policy Council, for example, that I am very honored to be a part of. Thank you so much. And others like the Lake County Community Foundation, right? That is like, we're really excited to see them begin and hopefully thrive soon enough. But it takes time, and it takes a village, it takes a community, right? And that's what we are here for, to support Lake County. So thank you very much for your time and all your support.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Supervisor Pyska.
And can you talk a little bit about this program nationally? Like why were we chosen, what other regions were chosen, the timeframe and the investment?
Sure. So there were originally eight locations chosen across the United States. And really, the big defining factors were risk for disaster. And that's not any particular disaster by any means. The original eight were us in Butte County in California, Terrebonne Parish, Louisiana, Mississippi County, Arkansas. I'm going to forget them. But they're all over the nation. That was the big thing, is that we wanted to make sure that when this program was new and being piloted, that it was able to be effective across localities, across different risk factors. So there was that risk factor, and then there was a socioeconomic vulnerability, a social vulnerability score. And social vulnerability really ties down into that objective number two, or outcome number two, that people that are affected by disaster aren't falling either further into poverty or into poverty because of evacuation. So those two factors combined, and then also trying to merge that with different Red Cross regions across the United States. So we have, we are now up to 15 active teams across the United States, and we have three more being actively recruited, one more being in California, and that's Monterey County, California. And then the other one in California is Tulare County.
Three years? Or five years?
So our team will be here. So it's going to be a permanent fixture of the American Red Cross's service systems to our community. The only thing that was tied up was the monetary grants and the funding allocations had a two-year funding period, initial funding period. And so we're still kind of working out what the long-term funding options are going to be, and, you know, how much, and how do you, you know, go through all that kind of stuff. But our team will be here in some form or another. This program will live on, but that funding source will change, or the amount, or how we go about it.
Okay. Great. And I think it's important to recognize that, once again, our county's been chosen to pilot something, not just from the state, but on a national approach to climate resiliency. And that's really what this program is. We know that we have a very strong volunteer base. We've talked about that all throughout the morning with our different proclamations. That truly is our strength. And I want to, I really want to think that that's also why we were chosen, because we have the ability to really carry on this work and provide results and activate. So I'm just really grateful that you two are here today, and I wish Shannon was feeling better and she could be here, too. I know this work is really important to her, too.
I know that she is not on Zoom either, so unfortunately, she is missed. Any, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I'm channeling my inner Pastor Shannon, too. So there were some acronyms out there, so I appreciate it does take a village. There's a lot of spokes in this wheel, but one of those was COAD. So if you could, just give us the 30-second elevator speech about that, if only because I get the emails, there's a lot of community planning going on with that, but I'll confess, I'm not totally self-aware of what's going on with that. So can you just give us a little shout out to COAD?
Sure. I think the biggest highlight that we have is that the COAD has existed in some form or another since the valley fire. You know, it's taken a bunch of different forms, and really in 2018, I think it kind of came together. And then it's...
Can we start with the name of...
Sorry, the community organization's active in disaster, COAD. And that group has really taken on a new life over the last couple of years. And, you know, our team is active in supporting them. You know, it's not a Red Cross-run or-led organization. We're just there to help support it with administrative support. And really, where we come into that is, the goal of the COAD is to get all of our community organizations that are active in disaster together, so that, again, we're not exchanging business cards in times of disaster, so that they can build networks, they can build phone of friends, they can understand where like-minded organizations have collaborative opportunities. And they are sectioned out into different work groups so that those like-minded organizations can start thinking about how those services are implemented during times of disaster.
Well, I just want to add, Supervisor Green, COADs and all of this proactive work has to happen during blue skies time. And in 2015, that was not a blue sky time, but that was when we had a real need for this, and we realized that COADs have been developed in other places around the county, or not around the county, around the state and around the country. So that was one of the goals, but we were not in blue skies time for several years. It was really difficult to build that organization, and we've luckily had some time. And then also, we have this administrative support, which was also kind of the missing link of bringing the people together and making sure that the meetings can be productive and ongoing, and all the partners can come together and do that planning ahead of time so that when disaster does strike, everybody has a clear understanding of their role and their responsibility and how they fit in the network together.
Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Simon?
Did a great job explaining that, Jessica, because it was a big conversation when we were forming Team Lake County after the disaster, and we were meeting. So getting the COAD together now in the direction it's moving, seeing its growth and opportunity, we've had many discussions at the Risk Reduction Authority and just trying to figure out the way that we're going to move forward. So glad that it is where it is right now, and just help continue and move that forward, I think is going to be a great thing the next time something does happen. So being prepared in that time is really good, and you explained it very well on the blue skies. Doing it now, just as donating for Red Cross, if that's what you choose to do, is the time is now, so that we're prepared for more disasters as they come.
All right. I will add that what I appreciate is that Red Cross is not trying to create new institutions or new facilities that they own, that we become dependent on for resiliency. You're working with us to create our own resiliency internally so that we don't have to rely on you on emergencies, because we do rely on you and many others during our emergencies. And so this idea of reducing the need and empowering our community, those are all nothing but bonuses to me. And so let's keep working on that. I know I appreciate the relationship that we've created between myself and Gabby because of the Food Policy Council. It's been exciting, every single conversation. Red Cross is definitely in the position to help and create things that we can own, that we can manage, that we can take on ourselves. And that's exactly what we want to do, is empower our community. And so very much appreciate the both of you and what you're doing for so many different aspects of how you're helping the community. So thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you both for your hard work and your team as well. If there's nothing further from board members or our presenters, let's open it up for public comment or questions. Please come on up.
I'm speaking to you today. In my guise is the clerk of the session of Kelseyville Presbyterian Church. And I wanted to speak about, you've seen it on paper, but I want to tell you about the real-world experience with these folks. They have been amazing, Nick and Gabby and Shannon. This is a real gift to our community. I'm so glad to hear that it's going to stay here in one form or another. Kelseyville Presbyterian Church was founded in 1872, and we've been doing service since then. And when we celebrated our 150th two years ago, we were looking at how do we expand? Resilience for us feels like the gospel message anyway, so how do we do this more? Started talking to Shannon, started talking to them, realized there was a fit. We have six acres and 14,000 square feet of space in downtown Kelseyville that we can put to work for the community. So that's what we're doing. They did a Red Cross training with us last week. I think a county employee came over to join us. They've provided us with AEDs, which, again, they trained us on last week. They're helping us with solar. They hosted us on the tour of Tuolumne County's center in August. Gabby sat with me and held my hand through a 50-page application packet to work on things to expand our food pantry, because our pantry has received a state grant to expand, and we know that the need is out there. So I just wanted to recognize them, they are really doing fantastic work. And they sit down with you and they explain things, and they give you the larger vision. It feels really good to plug in to something bigger and not reinvent the wheel. And just like our little partners over at Galilee Lutheran that are doing something much smaller, but no less important, because their community is very isolated in the case of a disaster sitting there on the side of Mount Canocti. And so it's great to, they basically took all this energy and harnessed it and clicked it in. And so it can last for the future. It can last, we can stand on our own feet and know what we need, and then we can be on call for you guys anytime you need us. So thank you, guys, for everything you've done.
Thank you for your comment. Any further public comments on this item? I see nothing in the chamber and no hands up in Zoom. And if there's nothing further from our supervisors, then thank you very much for your presentation and looking forward to continue to work in the community.
Thank you all.
Thank you both.
We're going to move on to item 6.8, our 9:25 a.m. We are not quite on time, but we'll get there. Consideration of Presentation of the Lake County Community Foundation. Please come on up. And Supervisor Pyska, would you like to introduce this item? And you can come to these seats as well. Whichever one you choose.
Well, I'm delighted that you're here, and I have to be honest, this is the first time that we've met. We've been hearing about the great work that you've been doing, and Supervisor or Chair Sabatia and I have been really cheering you on. This has been a need for a long, long time in our community, so I'm really looking forward to the presentation, and I'm looking forward to our long-lasting future relationship.
Thank you. Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity for us to introduce Lake County Community Foundation. I'm Annette Calmelo, serving as the Executive Director. And with me this morning is my colleague Chuck Barron, who is our Director of Operations. We're delighted to be here today and eager to share more about the foundation. I'd like to begin with that a community foundation is so important to local communities in good times and in disasters, such as Red Cross spoke about. They have been a great partner with us, and we appreciate everything that they do for us and with us. We, I'd like to share a little bit of our background and why we started the foundation. I hold an MBA and have over 25 years of construction experience. Chuck has over 40 years of experience in construction and has been rooted in the Lake County community for over 20 years. Chuck and I started working together when I accepted a position at Lake, or at Adventist Health, Clear Lake Hospital, as a project manager. There we did many projects, hospital and clinic renovations. But I think the most important job that we did was when we built the Hope Center. That really ignited a shared passion to do more for Lake County when we did that. So in the early summer of 2023, when we were approached about opening a foundation, we were very excited. We felt this was the next step into making a difference, and so we gladly accepted. And in August of 2023, we opened the doors, and we were able to realize our vision and our passion in opening that. We have a common thread in speaking with other county leaders, that there's a lack of housing. And we've... of housing and we've seen that there's an extreme lack of housing. There is a need for workforce, a workforce program where we can train people for jobs. And so we really want to make that difference for Lake County. And we feel that we have the ability and it's wonderful working with the, thank you, working with the county and all of our partners that we have. I'm going to pass this over to Chuck now, who is going to give some more specifics about the foundation. And once again, we extend our gratitude for welcoming us here this morning.
So I'm going to begin, I've pared this down for the sake of time and for your sake. So my father always said, you, the mind doesn't comprehend more than the seat can endure. So I do want to tell a couple of small things. We were actually born years ago and Annette doesn't know this, but in front of one of her clinics, it was winter and my wife says, we, we have to be helpful. And the guys, you know, would get, it was in a storefront and the guys would get there early and they made coffee. And of course there were people who were using the awning outside of the home. So we, we esoterically provided coffee and when we knew weather was going to be bad, we would run up to Walmart and get blue tarps and blankets. And I know you're, I'm not supposed to tell this stuff because I'm, I'm sure we weren't supposed to do that, but it was good. It was good. And that was my forte is I was matriculating into Lake County as we were moving to Middletown and, and we love it. And there's, there's lots of stories. There were business leaders who were involved in other community foundations, 501(c)(3) housing authorities who had come to us during the construction of the Hope Center and said, this is not going to be successful if you guys don't have a way of, of, obviously you figured out how to graduate people, but they have to go somewhere and you're going to have a real bottleneck. And so when we came into this thing, we were all, we were thinking about housing and we got together with a group of people in the city of Clear Lake. We had some business leaders and, and we, we talked about ideas, but it just didn't go anywhere. And then sometime later, we ended up in a meeting with Nick and Gabby and Pastor Shannon and, and they started talking about what we could actually do to make a difference. And yeah, I talked with my wife and then all of a sudden things came out of my mouth that I couldn't put back in and we were, you know, perhaps we should start a housing authority. We see the need. Well, that, the county already has that. That's, that's their lane. So we, we, Nick, it was pointed out, let's broaden this thing a little bit because, because of all the needs. So we did and we started the Lake County Community Foundation. So there's, there's like four things that we really see. We can, all of the housing questions seem, the workforce development idea always kept coming up and NCOs involved in that and there are lots of folks who are doing that. But we, we can't help but want to put your fingers in that pie a little bit. And, and I think we can, we can be helpful there. There's the housing question and I wrote these down so I wouldn't forget. Probably the, 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 there's one that really stands out and it, and it was the, it was the, the bait and the hook that reeled me in earliest. There was no fiscal agent in Lake County to receive funds. And after the fires, I told, I told someone the other day, I said, it, it took me a while to come to Middletown after the, you know, after the fires and I couldn't speak for 30 minutes and I couldn't even talk. And I thought, well, there's, there's aid, there's things, there's aid, there's things. And to find out that because there was no fiscal representative, all of your money went to Sonoma County, our money. I live here and this is, this is my community and our money went to Sonoma County and not to Lake County. So we have to do this. And then the, the fourth thing and, and equally is important, we just want to provide a, a round table to, to bring leadership together, to, to really begin to discuss ideas and talk about honestly moving the needle. And I mean that when I say that, I'm not real big on meetings. I've, I've, I've had a harder time with that. I'm, I'm more of a doer, but I'm, I'm learning. But we need, we need to get folks together because this is, thank you so much for hosting, letting us be here today to present to you. I can now put names to faces because every idea, every, every one of you guys, your names have come up in, in looking at potential projects and this, this person would be really helpful. This is a person you need to talk to and we're very grateful to you for that. So I'm, I'm not going to say a whole lot more. We do, we, we are ready to be interrogated. We'll be as transparent as we possibly can be and, and we really do mean to help. One of the things, it comes out in some of the meetings with department heads at the county. There was a meeting in Middletown at the tribe and I, I remember it, you have to get past the, the initial part where people are looking at you like, get to it, get to it. And, and it took me a while to realize what they were really saying was, and what's in it for you? Honestly, honestly, this is what we want to do and we just want to come alongside and, and lend support. And I think that's what a, a good community foundation does. Everybody has their ideas about it, but that's our heart. So.
Well, thank you so much for being here. It's not an accident that we had a, that following the Red Cross here today. We've been planning this for a couple of months, but I'm really glad that you talked about the fiscal side of this because that really has been the missing piece through all of our disasters. The funding that comes in on, you know, for a major disaster, a national declaration, there's a lot of funding that comes funneled into a community, but there has to be a fiscal agent to receive it and you're absolutely right. We don't know where any of that money went and it did not come back to Lake County, went other places. And that happened and we just have to accept that. But as we build the COED and we have the climate team in here from Red Cross and we do all that really proactive work, this has been the missing piece. And so I'm so grateful to you all for standing up because this is how we build the sustainability for all of these programs that we really need the public, private partnership to, to make happen, to activate, to see successes. None, none of us can do this alone. And so I'm so glad and so grateful that you're here today and that you've put the hard work into developing this because it has been a need that all of us have been talking about for years and years and years. If only we had a community fund, then we would have access to a lot more resources. So thank you.
Yeah, we, we've been very fortunate that things move slower in this world than, than I'm accustomed to coming from the marketplace, but it hasn't been all bad because with, you know, we get a, we get a certain amount of, I don't want to, if, if, so, so Red Cross has been very great about making sure that we're doing this and not them, you know, so that this is sustainable for years and years to come. But they're a wealth of knowledge and they know how to point us in the right direction because one of the things, I hate to bring this up, but it's in order to be a responsible fiscal agent, you, I told Annette, I said, I don't care what happens. I just want us to be squeaky clean because I don't want, I don't want to answer those kind of questions and know, and know that we're not squeaky clean. And, and we've, that we've been able to use this year to make the right connections, get the, get the right accounting, get the right software. And, and our, our friends in Calistoga who have their housing authority, he said, what are you using? And well, we're using QuickBooks, you can't do that. And, and they schooled us and we've, we've been really fortunate, lots of resources. Lots of folks have come out and just been very supportive and, and helped us, this is what you need to do so you can be in it for the long haul and not have a bad circumstance. So I know you're probably not supposed to talk about that, but I'm just being honest.
Well, transparency is very important.
Yeah, I know, I know. So because what, but it was really hard. When I saw the numbers that, that you actually deal with, it was, it was, wow, this is, this is, this is big. We, we went to join the, we were trying to join all the proper agencies and cal.gov, you know, all those things you have to do, the League of California Community Foundations. And we tried to join the country club there and we found out that we couldn't join that club yet because you need $10 million in your bank account and a few other things. I thought, well, we're not there yet, but if you're giving out donations, we'll, we'll take those. So Supervisor Green?
Thank you for the presentation. You had me at responsible fiscal agent. And, and, and for those just tuning in, it's, it's, it's hard to explain why I get excited. Oh, MBA, maybe you got an accountant.
Yes.
You know, we live in a community of doers. And so when we herd the cats together and we try to do good things, putting together a foundation like this, a real 501(c)(3) that's governed as such, that's hard. And we have so many nonprofits in our community that are small and struggling, coming out of COVID and all that. And it's not for lack of doers, it's lack of expertise in the governance side of things. One reason I'm excited is because on the Lakeport side, there had been smaller discussions about the need for a community foundation. And so I do want to encourage you to, to do some outreach with the city of Lakeport, the city manager, Mayor Froyo and Councilmember Matina, just to introduce yourself and explain what your vision is. Do you have any baby steps of like a mission statement or a website or where people can kind of wrap their heads around about what your longer term vision is? Because I hear housing, that's very important, but also mini grants to some of our struggling nonprofits and stuff like that. There's so much you can do with a foundation. It's such a big subject. So where can people kind of wrap their head around what your initial steps are going to be, your initial next steps?
We do have a website. It's lakeccf.org. There you can read our mission statement, our vision and you can reach out with any questions on that site as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board members?
So appreciate the time that we had yesterday for the brief moment we were there. There are just a couple of things that I brought up. So I've been trying to craft a community foundation for a while. I have failed to do so. I brought it to Hope Rising multiple times saying, we, I feel like we are a representation of a cross section of the community. This might be a good fit. I'm sure they're going to be happy I stopped bringing that to them. But it's been something that's been on my mind. I had lunch one day with the CEO or the president of Sonoma County Community Foundations, who mentioned how much they received from the fires that were supposed to be dedicated for Lake County. And so one of the things that I suggested yesterday, Senator McGuire is very much in tune with the community foundations, has helped us out in the cash fire by going to the League of Community Foundations, getting us some of those 300, part of the $300,000. I believe 200,000 of that came through the community foundations to help pay for hotel vouchers after the aftermath of that fire. So he's very well connected. I know at one point when I was trying to figure out how to get it started, I believe it was either Napa County or Marin County was offering to come to Lake County to help us or at least help the executive group that would be leading the charge of the community foundations to get started. So I think that those were some of the suggestions that I provided yesterday is have those conversations, see if Sonoma County can take you under their wing, knowing that they've received some of our money and maybe they're able to provide some sort of financial connection or assistance or cosign, whatever the case might be. So those were some of the suggestions and obviously made sure that whether it's Lakeport, the tribes or the city of Clear Lake or Lisa Judd and our administrative staff to make sure and check in with all of those individuals. Housing, we've already made that a priority for us. We're expanding our administrative office with a housing manager, with strategic plans. You can't have economic development without housing and you can't have housing without a plan. It doesn't just happen organically, especially in a community like this where we struggle to bring in developers to take interest in wanting to develop in our communities. So I'm looking forward to what this looks like. Yes, it's going to take many, many steps in order to take that full stride in becoming an official part of the League of Community Foundations. But I think those types of visions and those types of expectations should be set because that's when it really opens itself up to being really the attractive community foundation that has international and national advertisement of this is where you can place trusted donations to help the community. And as Supervisor Green mentioned, it's such a broad swath of things that community foundations can support from education to seniors to emergency preparation to all kinds of things, housing. And so I, I'm excited to see what happens. I have no issues or qualms with your priorities that you've set for yourselves. I think it aligns with everyone else. I know the city of Lakeport has been working on housing, the city of Clear Lake has been working on housing. Let's continue those efforts and make sure that we find the successes by all working together and not working separately in silos. So appreciate you speaking to the board and looking forward to more interactions and more successes in the future. Is there any further, Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just want to say, nice to meet you. I've heard about it. I tried to look at the website and get some information, you know, when I first heard about it. Jessica, I think you were the one who said, hey, did you hear, I never heard of the foundation until it was mentioned. So appreciate seeing your faces, you coming here today and talking about the vision that you want to do forward. But yeah, you know, actions speak louder than words. At least you're here in front of us, creating a new organization that we can all kind of learn about, work together to grow. But having that Lake County Foundation, you said it very well. We needed those fiscal agents, you know, after the Valley Fire and we know a lot of funds were funneled to Sonoma with the Redwood Credit Union, some other agencies. They did make their way back into Lake County, maybe not all of them, but I know there were many organizations that came through and donated throughout it. But that was the conversation as we had earlier. The COED wasn't set up, that communication, that, you know, all the pieces in place. So hopefully we can help grow and work together on things, but appreciate it because it is great to see and it's great that you're living down in Middletown, obviously, but you know, we'll go from there. So, you know, we'll just continue the growth and the opportunity. But as you've heard me say many times, telling our own story, having our own Lake County Foundation will give us an opportunity. And I know it's early on in, you know, your guys' organization and how we support it, I think is, will be long-term conversations we have with the CAO, the rest of the staff here. So, and you're talking about priorities, housing, everyone's working on it. Every government in this county is working on housing because there is a need and we know that there's an opportunity. Growth is coming to Lake County, said it many different times. You know, you're going to be moving out of the Bay Area, they're going to be coming this way. Housing sales are still strong here in Lake County. We have a beautiful, beautiful place and, you know, the next decade's going to be something that we really got to manage as we grow. So glad to meet you.
Thank you.
And my card's over there in, in there. You got my email. Let's have conversations, see how it's good. One suggestion I would have as you're growing is to hit the advisory councils. We have around the lake, there's, you know, we got almost one in every district, I think. I don't know what happens in Clear Lake, but eventually there may be one in Clear Lake. But you have many different community advisory groups that really get you in touch with the folks that are, you know, at, you know, right there in town doing what we need to do. So the advisory councils would be something else that I'd familiarize yourself with.
Thank you.
All right, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak?
Good morning. I'm Urea Turner, Community Development Director. I've already had a really exciting discussion with Mr. Barron regarding housing and the questions that he was asking when he came to the counter were just like really intriguing and invigorating. And I ended up spending a couple of hours this weekend going over state law and housing policy and, and, and so I encouraged him to be aware as we go through the local area plan updates, which are specific to land use and housing and zoning. But what I didn't let them know is that the Lake County Community Foundation is totally on my list of people to, to make sure that I drag in for input. So because I think their boots on the ground experience will be very valuable as we, as we work on our community visioning process for the next 20 years. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any further comment from the public? I see none in the chamber and no hands up on Zoom. Again, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for introducing yourself, not just to us, but to the general public as well and looking forward to further communication and conversations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Go ahead and move on to our 9:30 a.m. item 6.9, Public Hearing, Consideration to Approve by Resolution Summital of a Funding Application in the Amount of $372,232 to the State Housing and Community Development Agency for Community Development Block Grant Program Income to Continue and Expand the County Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance to Continue and Expand the County Micro-Enterprise Technical Assistance Program. Pass this on to CAO Parker. Not sure if Mr. Lucas is coming up, but he looks like he's not coming.
Yes, DCAO Rickelman will introduce this item, and Mr. Lucas will be joining him.
He's trading cards. Welcome, Mr. Rickelman and Mr. Lucas.
Good morning, Board. Ben Rickelman, Deputy CAO. And I'm here with Jeff Lucas, who is the principal at Community Development Solutions. So CDBG, Community Development Block Technical Assistance. Just for program background, the county entered into an agreement with the State Department of Housing and Community Development in 2021. The program became active in 2023. CDS manages the program. This is a picture of one of their classes. They do a variety of programming and one-on-one technical assistance. We think it's a great program to support the small business community here in Lake County. With the program, it was originally scheduled to sunset in May of this year. And what HCD originally communicated that there would be a new funding cycle that you could start to apply for at the beginning of 2024. And then what happened is we were notified in December of 2023 that because HCD has a new software system they're implementing, and we didn't get the entire rationale, but that is what they communicated to us, that that was going to delay applying for the new funding cycle. And they just kind of gave a rough timeframe of summer, fall of 2024. And so that would provide a funding gap in the program. Because even though we still have some funds left, around 80,000, how the program language is structured, we couldn't use it. And so if you remember, I came before you in January, and the original plan was to request, and we passed a resolution, a one-year extension using the existing funding. So there wouldn't be a gap in funding. And we could apply that through to about May of 2025. HCD came back and they're not going to allow that. I think it's, they're hesitant to do kind of one-off county solutions, being a state agency, they kind of want to just kind of move ahead with their statewide programs. But we really want to keep this program alive. And especially the one-on-one technical assistance, I think, is crucial. And having kind of a one-year gap would really hurt some businesses. So Jeff has been in communication with HCD. And this is actually, I think, a much more expansive solution, but it's what HCD is willing to do. So CDS also manages low-interest CDBG loan program for small businesses. And even with being low interest, it does generate some program income. So HCD has given permission with the board passing this resolution where we can move funds from the program income to support the technical assistance program. And then we're proposing with this resolution to HCD that the program would be extended from May of 2024 to May of 2027. I think that covers most of it, but do you want to just give kind of a small plug with the program itself?
Thank you. So actually, HCD, the state, has encouraged us to utilize the program income funds that we've accumulated from past loans in this way. And then more recently, they've noticed us that the next round of application cycles that was postponed previously is now scheduled to open up in July. Hopefully, they'll stick to that schedule. And so then we could go forward with applying for funds for housing projects or additional business low-interest loan funds and those kinds of things. So this is a way for us to utilize the funds that we have on hand and expedite the approval, hopefully at the state level, so that we don't have a gap in services.
Yeah, and I would just like to emphasize, even with the July funding cycle opening up for applications, by the time HCD would provide awards, that could be several months later. So this helps address that gap.
Supervisor Pyska.
Well, that's what I was going to bring up. This is notoriously slow funding. So this gap funding is critical to, to support the small businesses during that time. Is it just for technical support? And then are there any loan funds still available? We have some of our business community in the room here today, so.
Yes, we do. So yes, there are still loan funds available through the CDBG CV program. There's funding still available through that program for lending. We found quite a demand for the technical assistance. And what we've been doing is combining that with the services provided through the Lake County Economic Development Corporation. And we have a great network with the banks and so on. So, and the Small Business Development Center so that we can open up the services to a range of small and mid-sized businesses. It's working pretty good, so we want to keep it going.
Great. Well, thank you for this creative solution.
Any other comments or questions?
And I apologize for not asking this question earlier. And I'm not expecting you to give me a response, but I'm hoping that you can provide us the data. This has been going on for a little while, the technical assistance. Just kind of curious what kind of data you have as far as how this has helped our businesses? Has it increased our tax revenues? Like what is the return on the investment? It would be really nice to see. It sounds good, it feels good, but I need to know that it is good rather than just technical assistance was provided and it's just a flat line. I'd like to have that data in front of me rather than making assumptions and believing that this is doing what I think it is. Do you have any information or can you provide that data at a later time via email and just make sure that we better understand how this technical assistance has aided us? Because I know that, I'm not saying I'm going to say no today, but I know there's multitude of things that we can use program income for. And I want to make sure that the return on investment is the appropriate use of that program income.
So every quarter, we provide through the county information on those who have been served and the level of service that they've received and the type of service. So what I think what we can do is provide that directly to you, that information. We'd be happy to do this through the administrative office, has that data. And if you want additional information, what I can do is go back and we'll prepare a little more information for you as well. And we'd be happy to provide it to you. So currently, for example, we have 42 folks that we're working with. I'll give you an example, if that's okay?
Please, share it.
So we have an individual who came in, wanted a loan. They have a business in your district. And
I can't remember who it is.
Yeah. So these folks are struggling financially. So we looked at the financing and the loan was something that we are still considering. But they have a credit score that's really low because they've had issues and problems during COVID. A lot of people, as you know, we all know. And so we have an individual on our team now who can help them with activities that'll actually improve their credit score over time. So by taking care of some of this other debt and other issues they've had in the past, then they're more palatable for a future loan. So that's an example of something that will stabilize that business. And then the loan funds would be used for improvements to their existing business. And that would help generate cash flow. So that's a real practical example of what we're doing. We're also working with several startup businesses in the marketing, use of social media, access to information that otherwise, I mean, they can't afford to have folks who are specialists in website design and so on. So we are able to do that through this program and help them get set up so that they can generate income as a business and become, you know, going from a micro enterprise, a home-based business. And maybe they stay that way, but maybe they build, and then they actually end up with a brick and mortar structure. So those are some of the things that we've been doing. And we can prepare more information for you and provide that to you. We'd be happy to do that.
And I appreciate the story and the commentary as well. I feel, at least from my perspective, the deeper dive is, what's the outcome? Again, are we putting in money? Because we could work hard for 50 hours, and if there's no change, we worked hard for 50 hours. I just want to make sure that we're seeing and we're actually generating that change. Because that's not available to me. And that's just something that I would be curious for, to make sure that this is continued, that this receives continued support with reasons to support it that are data-driven.
Yes, Andy was very, was very quick on that connection that we made for that. So really good, thank you.
And just looking at the board, if that's, there's a consensus for getting some of that return of investment data, rather than just me speaking on it?
Getting it sent to the whole board?
Yeah.
Yeah, completely agree.
You did say it was in the data that we just already, or you just have a list of?
Yeah. What I think what we can do to get into the more specifics, I think that you folks are looking for, is start with the quarterly data that we're already accumulating and providing for, through the admin office, and then to the state as part of that reporting responsibility. We can provide additional information that gets into the specific services provided. And then if you'd like, we could also have some of the folks that have received the services come and, you know, present to you the impacts that it's had on their business, which in turn, and given them an opportunity to, you know, kind of say thanks for the assistance that's been provided, because it's through the county that they receive those services. I mean, maybe that combination might be helpful.
I think as long as it's a combination of data and anecdotal as well, that works for me. But I think data is going to be the most important part, in my opinion.
I'll just say regarding outcomes and what I've seen kind of with different small business programs is the, this is a generalization. Obviously, different firms can fall into both categories or one. But the access to capital, kind of the low-interest loans, is more established businesses that are generating and growing jobs and tax revenue. And kind of the technical assistance is kind of the pre to get them to that point. So kind of the outcomes you're going to see more with technical assistance is just being successful managing a business, having positive cash flow, growing. And then hopefully, they get to that next phase where they're creating jobs for the community. So we can kind of look at with the lending portfolio, the number of jobs and kind of the business growth there.
Thank you. That'd be great. The Lake County Economic Development Corporation also does some technical assistance. I just want to check in, and I know last I checked in with them, they're pretty busy with a lot of requests. This is complimentary to their work, not supplanting some of the work that they're doing. I just needed to check in and ask that question.
Yeah. Our group, in addition to implementing this particular program, also works on behalf of the Economic Development Corporation with similar services, different funding source. So Andy especially is, is on a weekly basis, we're exchanging information and discussing client needs, thinking of them as customers. And so in some cases, the county's program, for example, will assist a person 100%. In some cases, we'll do 80%, and they sort of graduate, so to speak. And then the EDC, through their funding sources, can assist. So we work very closely with them. It's a complementary arrangement. It's not supplanting or anything like that. What we're trying to do is utilize the resources that we have in the most efficient way possible. And that's from communication. So yeah, we have a lot of mutual clients that we serve together.
Okay. Now, thank you very much for that response. Any further, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I would like data points or anecdotes, give me some mix. But yeah, so I know what's on the agenda today is just getting this resolution approved. And I've been assured the dates are correct on it. But it's Appendix D on what is a much longer contract with a longer history. So the resolution itself didn't really tell that story for me. So we'll be supporting this today. But Mr. Rickelman, if I can bug you for any background information, before Appendix D, that would help fill in some of the blanks for me. And if you're coming back later to give us a presentation, I'd appreciate that even more. So thank you.
Sounds great. Yeah, HCD told us not to touch the resolution. That's why it looks that way.
Well, it looks like an application. It doesn't look like a continuation of anything. It doesn't mention three years. It doesn't mention the pre-existing program. So I assume there's a whole lot of verbiage before Appendix D that I'm missing out on. But it is what it is.
All right, thank you very much. Any public comment on this item? I see none from the chamber and none in the Zoom room. And I'll bring it back to the board for action to offer the resolution.
I offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye. All right, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, and then we will get to our 10 a.m. item, or a 10-minute break, and we'll come back at 10:57. And we were on item 6.10, our 10 a.m. public hearing. Consideration of Appeal, AB 24-01, of Planning Commission's Denial of Major Use Permit, UP 20-40, Higher Ground Farms, John Oliver applicant and appellant. Location, 3545 Findley East Road, Kelseyville, APN 008-026-07. Appellant has requested a continuance to April 23, 2024. And I'm so sorry, I started without the clerk of the board. But luckily she came in during that announcement. And I'm going to turn this over to Director Turner.
Good morning. Mireia Turner, Director of Community Development Department. The, during our scheduling process, when we were looking at this date, we did confer with the appellant. He, at that time, seemed available and said, yep, it's a good date. So we sent out our public hearing notice. After we sent out the public hearing notice, the appellant got back to us and said his travel plans had changed. He was no longer available for today. However, once you send the public hearing notice out, so it's published in the local paper of record, then it's kind of set in stone. So it goes on the agenda. But because the appellant is unable to be here today, he has requested a continuance of this item to April 23. We are happy to take any questions.
Any comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Green, you look ready to speak.
If it were to be continued, it would be to a date and time certain, so we wouldn't have to re-notice.
Correct. Should it be the will of the board, we're happy to confer with the assistant clerk of the board to get a date and time certain.
Okay. With this project in my district, I'm certainly supportive of a continuance so that the appellant may appear.
Quick clarification, do you have a date from the appellant of availability?
April 23.
Okay.
I'm guessing it's going to be 9:30, but I'm waiting for Johanna.
It's right there in front of my face.
If that be the, of course, the decision of a continuance is up to the board, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further comments? I'm going to open it up for the public on the continuation, not on the public hearing regarding the project. Any comments about the continuation of this item to April 23? And we'll get a specific time. Looks like 9:30 is what's being typed into the computer as we speak. I see none from the chambers and no hands in the Zoom room. I'll bring it back to the board if there's action or further conversation.
If there's nothing further, I move to, we continue the public hearing for this item to April 23 at 9:30 a.m.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will continue this at that exact date and time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going to move on to item 6.11, our 10:30 AM item. Consideration of resolution establishing the Kelseyville Area Council as the Municipal Advisory Committee for the Kelseyville area in District 5. And Supervisor Pisca, this is your item.
Yes. The community has decided that it is time to establish a municipal advisory council in the Kelseyville area, and I would like to invite whoever would like to come up and fill these at least four chairs and talk about the vision and the plan, and then adopt the resolution.
Good morning.
Hey, so we have Brian Hansen?
Hello.
And Sabrina Andress. Would you guys like to talk about how this came about and what your plans are and how we can move forward?
Hello. Good morning. Thanks for having us. My name is Sabrina Andress, born and raised in Kelseyville. I own a small business in downtown Kelseyville and each general store, and I'm the executive director of Motherwise, a countywide nonprofit based here in Lakeport that works with pregnant and perinatal moms with their mental health. There is a group of us who came together earlier in the year to talk about what it would look like to create a municipal area council pursuant to the government code that we have listed in the bylaws. The hope for the group from the get-go was to provide an additional space for Kelseyville residents to come together, talk about issues that impact the community. And really, I think the catalyst was the timing with the general area plan, recognizing that the Kelseyville area plan that we have is a bit dated. It doesn't mention internet or broadband, for example, so it's time to update it. So that was certainly one of the main reasons that we wanted to get together, so that we had an official county-approved body to talk through what a Kelseyville area plan would look like, to then build up into the general area plan. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done. It's a pretty diverse range of people, ages, backgrounds, races, and we are here today to answer any questions that the board may have around our bylaws and resolution.
And then, if I may, Brian Hansen, lifelong Kelseyville community member. I think it's important to remember that there's six other area councils that we've actually had the opportunity to review some of their bylaws and resolutions to assist with ours. Of course, there's autonomy within each group. Everybody has a unique area and ideas, but I think it's also, as Supervisor mentioned before, it's important not to operate in silos and be able to share information for the county plan. But again, with these area councils, I think it brings a group of people that are motivated and want to see the betterment of their own communities. So I think that was what really appealed to me about getting involved. The, basically, I want to make sure too that the, this is just a group that's trying to provide a space for, to have these critical conversations about our unique areas. We're not there to make any decisions that are outside the bylaws or the resolutions set forth. It's important to remember they're acting within the Brown Act. There's some organization to these meetings. And, review my notes here real quick. Again, yeah, not trying to make any decisions outside of those bylaws and resolutions. And I think traditionally, the motivated community members that, in the KBA, or the Kelseyville Business Association, have always sort of taken these types of projects on, and I think that they've done a fantastic job. They've, a group of, like I said, motivated, intelligent people, diverse group. I think that will help alleviate some of the pressure that's put on them to constantly be steering this ship, if you will.
Thank you very much. Anything further, Supervisor Pisca?
No.
Opening up for comments or questions. Supervisor Green?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for all the work you've put into this, number one. Having a MAC representing the Kelseyville area is a good thing in general, but the details, right? So a couple of details sprung up for me on this. One is, in Section 1 under Article 4, the election of directors that would then be recommended to the Board of Supervisors for appointment. Not saying this is on your group, but having parity among our MACs and how our appointments are made and how recommendations are made to this board, the board does retain ultimate authority to make these appointments. So when we have some MACs doing elections and some that aren't, it's more homework for us to take note of. So we want to give proper weight, but when directors are recommending future directors and all that, that just kind of stands out. But I'm kind of agnostic on that. I just point out that other MACs don't necessarily do it that way. And since that's a lesser question, let me come back to the bigger question I have, and that's Exhibit A showing the Kelseyville planning area. It's a rough map, and I know it's rough by design because it relies on a 30-year-old map of what is a land use planning area, not necessarily a designation of what the Kelseyville community is. So on this particular map, as best I can tell, there's kind of a hard cutoff on the eastern side, so I don't know how many people in the Riviera who may consider themselves Kelseyville residents are going to be eligible or excluded for this particular representative body. And then there's a whole bunch of people over in my district closer to Lakeport who may not even self-identify as Kelseyville people. So I know it's a starting point, and maybe we're going to refine this, especially through the general plan process. But can you just explain what your thought process was of this municipal advisory council is going to represent Kelseyville citizens? What's your best explanation for those just watching at home or looking at this rough map of who's going to be representing Kelseyville and how broad that net is?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, for sure. With regard to Article 4, I'm doing a really brief reading on my teeny-tiny phone around, "All elected directors shall be recommended to the Board of Supervisors for appointment." I read that as that the ultimate authority still sits with the Board of Supervisors, which I think is what you're asking for. So I read it the same way, and I think that's the way that our steering committee designed it, so that both entities, both the Kelseyville Area Assembly and the Board of Supervisors has a say, but Board of Supervisors has ultimate say, as we are simply an advisory council. So that, on that point.
Yeah, and I'll just add, that's how it's done at the Cobb Area Council. Every December, the body will make nominations and vote who they recommend, and then whoever's recommended will fill out an application and come to the board. That's not saying that anyone couldn't fill out an application and apply.
I will say, we like to work smarter, not harder, so we use the Cobb Area Council bylaws quite liberally in creating and crafting ours, as in, we started there, we changed everything from Cobb to Kelseyville, and then we took a deep dive into each one. So on the map, couple thoughts come up. First, we, you mentioned that that's a land use and not sort of what the Kelseyville area is. My understanding is that was the map used for the Kelseyville area plan back in the 80s, 90s. So while it was directly related to land use, it was related to all the other issues in the general area plan and the Kelseyville area plan as well, which is why we felt comfortable saying, okay, it's what we have. We don't need to build something from scratch right now, so we will use what our predecessors used. While we didn't have an area council at the time, there were a lot of Kelseyville business members who were still involved, who were part of that planning process, and this is the map that they came up with. So that's one. As to Riviera's, absolutely, Riviera's are in Kelseyville. The reason that we kept them out, one, they weren't in the first one, but two, they've got a voice through their HOAs. And because Kelseyville doesn't have that kind of mechanism, it seemed like a relatively easy delineation between Kelseyville and the Riviera's, even though the Riviera's are part of Kelseyville.
And I'll just add one more thing. There's a separate Riviera area plan.
Oh, yeah, that too.
Anything further, Supervisor Green?
Oh, sorry. And we're incredibly open to changing them, obviously, as the area plan discussions come up, both within Kelseyville and the general area plan. Again, this was, here's what we've got, we're all incredibly busy people, let's put enough time to get the ball moving so that we can then have these conversations as a much larger group and not simply the eight, nine, 10 of us who are showing up for the steering committee meetings.
Okay. Thank you for the background and borrowing the template from Cobb, but I will point out, point of information, not all of our MACs follow that. And in my estimation, if you want to cast the widest possible net for potential applicants, you do that. So our normal process for our other advisory councils, we advertise the vacancies in November, and we take what we get, and then we can kind of fan the flames with any personal outreach too. But I'm just a little hesitant on that, not to the point of opposing it, but, for example, we have a fire district here that can make recommendations for filling vacancies on its board, but it doesn't always do that. So it can give an appearance of, you know, insider stuff, if you will. But if you were to find that eastern boundary of the map, though, again, if we were to try to find out who's eligible to apply for this council if we established it today, where's that hard eastern border? Who's going to interpret that? Do you have a good idea where that eastern border sits?
If I may respond, if you look at the GIS map and you drill down, it can get down to the very specific streets, and geographical location is not a thick line.
But we don't have GIS mapping for that.
Can we have Director Turner?
I think there are.
There is.
Yeah. And my response was a quick, we're going to get giant maps and print them out and bring them with us to the meeting.
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. Historically, the Kelseyville area plan voiced its coverage to include Kelseyville, Big Valley, and Findley. And so the map was drawn accordingly. We do have access to GIS layer right now that does show us which area plan of particular parcel is located in, and we use that in all of our land use permits, because we have to determine if a proposed project is consistent with that particular local area plan. So as far as community development goes, if someone called and said, hey, which area plan are we in, we'd be able to assist them with that. That being said, in the future, we already, we are working on our updates of our local area plans and our general plans with heavy reliance on GIS layers. And so that information will stay equally as accessible to the public and to county staff going forward.
And I believe that the original attachment was the kind of blob map that you shared, but that there is a little bit of a more detailed map that has been uploaded in the attachment. But again, that, I'm looking at the layer right in front of me, the computer, the GIS system does have those layers to help identify and separate who's within that area and who's not, so.
Yeah, the blob, the blob was my, about as good as I can get with my graphic design abilities on Kelseyville.
Sorry for my choice of words.
No, it's absolutely a blob.
Additionally, one of the purposes of a municipal advisory council is to send recommendations to the Board of Supervisors regarding land use permits. And so dovetailing the advisory board with the planning area seems consistent and actually very efficient manner of determining or sending appropriate feedback to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you very much.
Sir, are you talking about a layer within the main parcel map?
Yes.
Okay. As opposed to, for example, our municipal advisory councils have a standalone mapping feature in our GIS?
It's actually quite cool. For anyone who didn't know about them, I didn't until we started doing this process. I highly recommend you check out the GIS maps and play around. There's a lot of layers, and it gets very granular.
I believe it's under the district section of the layers, and then you can go to supervisory district and area plan districts and all the other stuff as well.
I just want to explain why I'm drilling down on this. We adopted a blob when we created Scott Valley Community Advisory Council, and we've been spending close to a year trying to fix that blob. So it's really, if it doesn't happen today, it doesn't happen. But if we can get it right the first time, you know, that's my preference.
I can agree with you, Supervisor Green. It seems a little counterintuitive when you have Lakeport addresses and 95453s that are in a Kelseyville Area Council map, but I think the GIS would be my referral on that.
Supervisor Simon?
I just want to make reference to the Milltown Area Town Hall and its organization. So we do include one of the largest HOAs in Lake County, which is Hidden Valley. They are part of our, you know, inclusivity, not exclusivity, as we're always look for. Most people included in the area, so I just, I would encourage, and it would be my thought, that you would include those HOAs, because we have an issue with HOAs where they're not government organizations, they are community organizations that do a lot of good work in our areas. And having that input, you know, for the ultimate area is something that has worked well. Matter of fact, I think our chair maybe, or one of our board members is from Hidden Valley on the Milltown Area Town Hall. And that exclusivity has worked really well. I think in the coordination of Cobb Area Council, we even had discussions about, you know, because we go by the fire district lines, of whether we'd eliminate both from each, and we just said, you know, we're just going to leave it as is, and if someone wants to go attend one or the other, depending where you're at, you can go to those meetings. So, you know, inclusiveness, I think, is important in as far as it goes. So, you know, we do have advisory commission that have HOAs in it, and Hidden Valley being one of the biggest ones in our district.
That's good to know. Math is certainly one that we're looking to, because there's both the math and the, I think it's MAMA, the Business Association.
Almost the Business Association.
Right, exactly. The fact that they've got both in one town, which would be similar to ours, we're very much looking to build those relationships and really get to know about the HOA. For me, I think the, that kind of topic needs to be and should be put to the entire assembly. I'm not comfortable, as the steering committee, the ones getting the ball rolling, to make those decisions, particularly because they deviate from last time. That's really it. Which is not a, I've got a commitment to having those conversations, both of the ones we're talking about. But I think the most appropriate place to have those is within the entire area council, and not, you know, the eight to 10 of us who happen to be the ones that sort of coalesce together.
So the good thing is, you wouldn't have to take responsibility for that, because this board works with the supervisor to set that. So I just want to let you know that if a decision is made by this board to expand that out, that's not something you guys did when you came here. This is a conversation we're having today, and, you know, this board supports, you know, creating these advisory committees. We've done it all the way around there, but the board has the ultimate decision.
Great.
And that is something, sometimes the advisory boards, it's for advising. It's not for telling the board what to do. It's like, oh, here's our recommendation. And sometimes the supervisor or the board doesn't agree with that decision.
Right. And that's our biggest driving factor, is to have an established vehicle for that advising.
Yeah. And I'll just speak to the, the area that's been mapped out. It's fairly consistent as a community, and when you add in the Riviera's, it's a completely different community. And so there's different needs. And if I look at District 5, I always look at three different areas of interest, three different distinct communities. And so I can understand why you wanted to keep it within Big Valley and within the area map, because, you know, you're going to have consistency with the area plan update. And I have still been planting the seeds also for the Riviera's to coalesce around their own advisory council. I think that would be really beneficial, too, to include the HOAs. But there's a lot of really distinct differences between the communities.
Just want to follow up again. We also have Anderson Springs in the Milltown Area Town Hall. That is another HOA, complete different community than Hidden Valley, Milltown, lower, you know, all our agencies. And then you obviously have the Lower Lake Action Committee Group that isn't a community advisory group from this board. So it's done in many different ways in my district. I just want to point that out, that each one of our communities in the Milltown Area Town Hall are completely different, and we do have two HOAs.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll just add, so the East Region Town Hall does have a POA. It's a double-legal POA, Clear Lake Oaks skis, and then you have Spring Valley. I know that in, I think it's Upper Lake, they have their own city, like their Upper Lake Town Council, aside from Worth, too. And so they do their own thing. So different things here and there, but I know we've talked about some of it earlier off to the side. But I just wanted to emphasize that because you mentioned HOAs and POAs and whatnot, so.
Any further comments or questions, Supervisor Green?
Just a question, because it was raised. Is it a fair assessment that basically, as it stands right now, both from land use and politics, that we are talking about the Big Valley area, generally speaking? You're not picking up a lot of the river. If you are, it's a little baby slice.
Yeah, I mean, down on Soda Bay, but it doesn't go all the way into the Riviera's. But I wouldn't.
So kind of harken back to my Scotts Valley Advisory Council. It's focused in the Scotts Valley. It doesn't really focus on the larger Lakeport area. the Scotch Valley. It doesn't really focus on the larger lakeport area. And we actually have a commenter, I don't have it in front of me, suggesting that maybe, among other things, that, what's in a name, you know? So, as a Big Valley Community Advisory Council, the map makes sense, the communities of interest make sense, the exclusion of the HOAs higher up in the Riviera's kind of makes sense. So, I only mention that. If there's openness to a name change reflecting the geography and the actual communities of interest, that would include, obviously, the town of Kelseyville. But, you know, I'd be supportive of a name change.
There's nothing further. So, here are some of the things that concern me a little bit. More than 50% of this Kelseyville planning area is in District Four, and it's looking to be titled a Advisory Council for District Five. So, either A, we make it a District Four slash District Five Advisory Council, where both supervisors are equally involved and maybe are equally able to select members, or minimize the amount that's in District Four. I get it that within the Cobb Area Council or the Middletown Area Town Hall, that there might be a little bit of area, but it's not more than 50%. And people in District Four need to communicate with District Four Supervisor, and people in District Five need to, so on and so forth. This opens up a door that seems a little awkward, unless we say this is a combined District Four/District Five, or start eliminating some of District Four.
Right.
If it remains the same, and I'll just be blunt, because of the thousands of emails that we've received with what's going on in Kelseyville, and I'll leave it at that, this also covers the Big Valley area, the sovereign nation of Big Valley. And I would say, offer a seat, because everything that happens in that area has impact to our neighboring communities. We don't have the ability to make rules or regulations or anything specific to that, but build that relationship, create that seat.
Absolutely.
If it's going to remain the same, I would like to see that changed in the membership. But I am very concerned that about 30% of this area is only District Five, but we're naming it District Five Advisory Council.
Yeah, the, I don't have any data or numbers or answers back, but my question back to you would be, while that is 30% of land, if we're talking population, there's going to be a much larger percentage than 70, I think, who are in the actual District Five. That is just a guess, but I think it's a relatively educated one.
And I'll respond, because this originally, this group came together to work on the area plan update. And when I, it didn't occur to me that it was including District Four, until I saw the map in the presentation at the KBA last week. And so, I did reach out to Supervisor Green. And I always believe that these municipal advisory councils come organically up from the community, and I would like to respect that this is what they want to do. And I feel like the two supervisors could join together and work collaboratively. We could both support the meeting. We could both be there to report out on what's going on. Because this is a singular area, but it is two different district boundaries, and they change every 10 years, little bit by little bit. So, I'm comfortable with moving ahead like this and just being District Four slash District Five, and being supported by two supervisors. There's a lot of crossover that happens for this area. So, I don't have a concern there.
And our steering committee, I think, is fine with doing District Four slash District Five, you know, in what we could communicate over email in the last couple of days. And then, just the quick head nod I received from two other members in the room.
But again, this is establishing the MAC today. They have not met yet. We don't have members appointed yet. And these are all things, these are conversations, including the name, including the seats, that are all going to come from the conversations when they start having meetings. And that is the kind of organic engagement that we want to see coming out of our communities. So, I'll just leave it at that.
And what I would offer also, in addition, is, since there may be, I haven't heard from Supervisor Green yet, about being a joint effort here, but if it is the case that there is some sort of split in the membership to ensure it's not just all people who live within the township of Kelseyville, yet representing also District Four. Because they would, that wouldn't make sense to have that split if there's not a membership split. I'd also make sure, want to make sure and hear from the team about my suggestion about Big Valley having a seat.
Well, so, you can, it's, I'll just go back to how the Calvary Council is formed. And there was very specific designations of the seats. But as people move on or step away, it can be really difficult to fill those seats. So, you can have that seat intentional with a person, you know, representing this area. But when it comes down to participation and who shows up for the meetings, you kind of have to weigh that more. Because there is a requirement to, you can't even apply unless you've been to two meetings. And then you have to keep coming to meetings to hold your seat. So, there is a balance there of wanting full representation, but you have to weigh that with who actually shows up and who wants to participate and be there. So, I feel like it's better to kind of leave that loosely open and for the group to decide. And obviously, the supervisors will be there at every meeting to weigh in and make sure that voices are being heard from throughout the region. But it's really difficult to tie those seats to individuals who may or may not be participating in the future. You want to have a quorum. You want to have the seats filled.
And to your latest concern, which is one I agree with, we wanted to make sure that the language in bylaws stated that to be a board member or to be an Assembly member who can vote, you need to have a primary residence in the Kelseyville Area Council plan, map. So, it does include everything that we're talking about. But that's one thing to simply say that, and another to directly solicit feedback and participation from folks in those areas who aren't sort of in the more Kelseyville proper. I hear that.
And obviously, the comments I'm making are dealing with the equity of the whole geographic area, as well as the folks that live in that region.
Yeah, completely.
Any further comments or discussion?
My only comment, I think the combined districts is a good idea. Where you get representation. We can't make it to all these, every meeting, every time. But having two supervisors you can go to, you know, obviously, that's an added benefit to the area. I would imagine, if EJ had an opportunity to get another supervisor in the district, he'd jump on that.
He can go on, too, if you want.
Because he's got a bunch of the boards over there, you know? I've made a comment before, make one big one, then you got it all. But...
Super Mac.
You know, Super Mac, yeah, over on the North Shore. But I think that combination is good. And I think, you know, our public comment, as you talk about the Big Valley, you know, the Big Valley Area Municipal Council, you know, I think that goes really well with the combination of the two districts. So, and that's where we're talking about, you know, forming this for that whole valley right there. So, those are my comments. And, you know, I know there was a name suggested, but I really like that all-inclusive name of the Big Valley area. So, it does give you that inclusiveness and that openness.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, first, District Four or Five, I agree. Definitely, we can have collaboration between supervisors, if only because supervisors sometimes disagree on things. So, sometimes having two people in the room to air things out in front of the council can be healthy and productive. So, no real problems with that. I do appreciate your comments. Chair Sabatier, I don't know how to cook that in, or probably wouldn't cook it into this initial iteration of the bylaws. But certainly, when it comes to populate this committee, some serious public outreach should happen. Because, among other things, if this is going to happen at all, it should be a place to build bridges and not just continue to keep people in their silos. So, I think there's probably a sense that we want to move ahead today. So, other than other substantive changes that could come, I would say, let's do the initial outreach. Let's see how well-balanced we can get the initial council appointed, and see where we go from there. But I think one way to, one way to take a small baby step toward that inclusivity is to accept a friendly amendment today if there's going to be a name change. Thank you.
And my last question, it feels like there's already a membership kind of thought out of who would be members of this group. Am I correct in kind of reading between the lines, that you have members in mind, specific to fill up these positions?
We have members among the steering committee who have indicated an interest, and we are very committed to, so we have a press release drafted, which will go out. We brainstormed, you know, PTOs, KBA, to the county. Built into this is the idea to spread this far and wide for applications. And not all steering committee members are interested, and some are interested but know that they might not get it. It's about as loose as it can be right now, I think.
I'd like to also add, I'd like to also add, we have interest from a tribal member from Big Valley in the ranchery over there. Been soliciting some assistance from, excuse me, from him. He was scheduled to be at the last meeting, could make it for one reason or another prior obligation. But that, we're trying, yeah.
Good.
And I appreciate your point, Supervisor Green, about building bridges. I mean, this really is, you know, there is no silver bullet to all of these issues that we're dealing with, especially when there's so many emotions and big feelings involved. But our sincere hope is that this is a space where those conversations can be had in a really thoughtful, intentional, respectful way.
And just if we can, during the outreach phase, Scotch Valley Band, too, would have some...
And then, you're talking about a friendly amendment to change it to Big Valley? Yeah. I don't feel comfortable saying yes or no based on the steering committee, but fully understand that that's your decision, and I'm on board with it.
Any further comments or questions? And I'm good with the change. I know that Supervisor Simon spoke in support, and Supervisor Green, and I would also like to see that change to make it all-inclusive, because it goes much further out than just the Kelseyville boundaries.
Just want to throw one more thing out there, because all of our advisory councils are a little different. You know, Middletown Area Town Hall, they don't take any money or, you know, have any fiscal agent or anything like that. Does Calvary Area Council?
Oh, they do.
Okay. So, just one more thing to throw out there, you know, however you guys are putting it together, just as a suggestion, you know, if you have the ability, and I know there was a Lake County Foundation that talked about being a fiscal agent, and that may help with some of the advisory committee issues and stuff. But it's always great, because then you're just pulling that money in locally and working with the, you know, the supervisors to help work that through. So, just letting you know, Middletown doesn't do it that way. But I just wanted to mention that to you, and maybe you guys already had those discussions, but...
We did, and decided early on that, no, thank you, to start. But I have, I have reached out to Christopher Nettles at the Calvary Council, who's done a lot of the accounting work there, to at least start the conversation with whoever is on the board, if the board decides, or, excuse me, if the entire Assembly decides to go that direction.
And, you know, because each one of our districts are good, and I know you guys have the Business Association up there that does a lot of good work, and I know that's just going to help you guys as you guys are forming this whole advisory committee.
Yeah, we went and presented three of the steering committee members and had a really great discussion about it.
And I do want to say to Vice Chair Crandall, I'm not ignoring that you have a piece of District Three in the northern area, right in the lake. But I figured that was, we can ignore that part of the overlap.
Nice try.
You are more than welcome.
So, I do want to discuss timing. We tried to get this on the agenda last week, because they're, they want to have their meeting on the third Wednesday of the month. And in April, that's when the area plan kickoff meetings are happening. And so, if we tried to squeeze in a March meeting, that doesn't give very long for noticing. And because this is such a diverse area, we probably want to be more thorough with the noticing. And so, what are we thinking? Do you want to come back in two weeks, and we can make appointments, and then that will give about 10 days to notice? Then we won't, you won't have the March meeting, but you'll be ready to go for April.
That was the overwhelming decision that the steering committee made, was give as much time as possible for notice for the board applications.
Okay, great.
So, I'm a little confused by this, and maybe, again, it's because of my Scotch Valley Council. So, the expectation was to get them up and running so that the kickoff meeting could be held at a meeting of the new group, a noticed meeting of the new group? Because if I'm bringing in my council, I'm kind of wondering, do I have to call a special meeting to get them all in the same room at a kickoff meeting? Or is there going to be kickoff meetings assigned to every MAC? And maybe it's just my MAC, but is there a one-size-fits-all approach to how these area plans are running out? Are you going to be presenting at all MACs all the time, or are you...
And at this time, unless the board wants to overrule, we're speaking specifically about the creation of this MAC, not the process of the area plans. I would say, please reach out to Director Turner and figure out exactly what that is.
I'll just say that our meetings are, my District Five meetings are scheduled for April. And the one that is for the Kelseyville Area Plan is scheduled for the meeting that they, would be their first meeting as of April.
And we are very thankful that the municipal advisory councils that we reached out to were willing to house our first of three local area plan meetings for each area plan area. We weren't, because of staff resources, we're not able to do a kickoff meeting with every single municipal area council. So, in those cases, yes, some consolidation is welcome, as special meetings are helpful in order to comply with the Brown Act, so you could have multiple town councils in the same location at the same time.
Okay. And so, at this point, if we did move forward with the consensus that I'm hearing, that we would change the entirety of the resolution to replace the KAC with the BVAC?
Unless you want to be bath.
No, thank you. I'll have to do a whole new logo, but that will take me about 30 seconds. So, yes.
Okay. And I think those were the only changes that we were looking to do, other than for District Four slash Five.
And again, they're all over the map, literally. But Scotch Valley added the word "community". So, it's not a muni advisory council. So, in Scotch Valley being a rural area, for whatever reason, they added the word "community". So, if BVAC isn't to your liking, BBCAC is also there, too. But it just adds a word, and it's...
BVAC is great.
There you go.
And those things can be changed as things move on. And I think we're just looking for a point to initiate this. I'm going to open it up for public comment, since there's nothing further here. Let's go ahead and start in the room, please.
I'm Alan Fletcher, a 15-year settler in Lucerne or Seagram. I am delighted you accepted my first recommendation of a more inclusive name. Just wondering whether the area plan might follow to match, because it's this exact same map. Maybe rename it the Big Valley Area Plan rather than the Kelseyville Area Plan. But one's enough. I think I've been assured by the discussion here. My second concern was...
If you can get a little closer to the microphone, to make sure everyone can hear you.
One of my concerns was, it appeared to be maybe a pop-up organization, but it's obviously been going for a long time. And I was reminded, looking at my history, that Kelseyville in 1888, the township of Kelsey Creek Incorporated. If they'd stuck with their incorporation, we wouldn't be having this discussion about who sets the name. But in any event, I think it's a good plan. I support MACs, and I'm delighted of the general name change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the public regarding this item? Please come on up.
Good morning. My name's Rick White. I am a graduate of Kelseyville High School, past president of the Kelseyville Business Association, past president of the Lake County Association of Realtors, and I'm an active member, board member of the Lake County Economic Development. I'm liking what I hear here this morning. I really think that this is something Kelseyville's been needing for a long time. And now that we have an area planned to dive into and try to think about the future of our area, this is great. I think what I'm hearing today sounds positive. It sounds like, you know, we're finally getting things off to a good start. So, I just wanted to recommend that we do move forward with this, and even call it the Kelsey, or the Big Valley Area Council. And I think that we're all excited. We've got a lot of young people that want to get involved with this, because after all, this is going to be part of their future. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come on up to the microphone. You seem to be the last one. Or maybe not.
My name's Vernon Blanger, better known as Verge. And I'm in support of the Area Council and the name change on this. I also am very pleased with all the work that's been done by the KBA, Business Association. I've been very upset... I've been very upset about the name Kelsey because I'm sure you all know the history of him. Enslaving, starving, the whole thing to murdering the people that lived in the area. And, you know, there's been a lot of trauma that's being addressed slowly in this whole change with the natives here. And a lot of the people, you know, I spend a lot of my time up in Kelseyville. And I hit me with work, you know, socializing, playing. And it's a beautiful place. And I want to see it moved where everybody's included. And this seems to be the goal with a lot of people. I understand totally where a lot of people have kept the name of Kelseyville because you grew up here.
Sir, sir, I want to make sure we're talking about the creation of the municipal advisory council. Yes, that we did look at revising the name of the council, but I want to make sure we stay on topic of what's on the agenda, which is the municipal advisory.
Okay. And well, thank you. I'm very glad that you're perceptive to the need for the change in the name. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak?
Elizabeth Larson, wearing my Lake County News hat. I was curious if I could get an explanation of the actual timeline of when the work on this started and who is on the steering committee.
If you could please respond, thank you.
I need to check my email.
Do you want me to get back to you whenever you can find that?
Yes, give me, give me a second.
Is there someone else that has a comment?
I think it was January.
I know it was January, but I'm just not sure the date.
You want the exact date? January is.
So January 23?
I can get you the exact date.
24, January 24.
Really?
Was it, was this, no, January of 2024, not 2023.
Yeah. And I am now looking up email.
And we'll, we'll come back to you for the names if you don't mind. We have a public comment. Please come on up.
Hello, I'm Lorna Sides. I live in Kelseyville and I'm the proponent that put in for the name change of Kelseyville to Conotoi.
If we can please.
And I want to, that's not what we're going to speak about. I just wanted to thank Jessica for getting this thing rolling and for representing so many people so well. And thank Michael for putting forth the name change for, for the council here. I think, I think it's going to be very good. And I'm, I'm also quite interested. And you were speaking about that eastern border, but I'm very interested in that western border. If it does contain the rancheria, that's going to include a huge business, which is the, the Conotoi Vista Casino would be included in that area instead of being left out. There's a large segment of our population of the valley that is in the rancheria area. And then they have that large business going in with the, the gas station and a large store going in there. So I think that would kind of make sense when you spread that valley out, that it would include everything up until you become the city of Lakeport. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe that the casino and the entirety of the tribal lands that are there are in the map. Am I correct on that? From what I looked at, that's what it appears to be.
I think it's partially.
Is it partially?
Partially.
Where that new economic development that she's speaking of is, is within the map. But obviously we have no, there's no jurisdiction there.
I have dates. January 12th is when Miley Field and myself sent out an email to, do you want names spoken in the record?
That was the request.
Okay.
If you have that available, then please.
Thank you phones. That went to, the email went to Brian Hanson, Brandon Baiza, Gabby Juarez, Brian Fisher, JB Balasteros, Rick White, Nellie Dorn, Joy Merrily. Caitlin Andrus was sent from Sabrina Andrus and Miley Field. And Jessica Pisca and Maria Turner were CC'd. Now that group then grew and is slightly different than the group that ended up drafting the bylaws. And I have that, I have those names as well, if you would like them. Give me one more second. That is Brian Hanson, Caitlin Andrus, Greg Penella, Joy Merrily, Meg Langford, Rick White, Weston Seifert, Angel Acosta. And that is it.
Thank you very much. And just to state at least what I'm seeing in, on our GIS, there is a layer for rancherias. Granted, it may not be most up to date because I believe they are building south of Soda Bay Road. And I'm making the assumption that that is tribal land in trust. But it is within the Kelseyville planning area, at least based on the GIS stuff that's available to us. So I'm sure more details will be found as things progress. I see no one further in the public in the chamber that wants to speak. All right, let's go ahead and start online with Gabe.
Hello, everybody. My name's Gabriel Ray. I'm a enrolled member of Scotch Valley Band of Pomo Indians, also elected tribal councilman for the tribe. I just wanted to say that, you know, Scotch Valley, we own a quite a bit of property in Kelseyville. We own some houses out there. We have quite a few tribal members that live out there. And, you know, speaking of inclusive, you know, I hear people speaking of inclusivity, inclusivity, excuse me, we would very much like to have representation on this committee. And we are very in favor of Big Valley for sure having participation. And because I'm just worried about what this committee is actually going to be about. And so I would really like to get a copy of those bylaws that were just mentioned. And also that's why I just want to state that, that I guess when I was just talking about the name change, so I won't, but I think that it's, you know, I hope this isn't a ploy to try to, you know, get around. Or because right now the name change is coming up, we're working on the name change. So I think keeping that in mind before anybody makes any decisions through this committee is important. To not try to backdoor the process that's already in place. So thank you for that opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. And I think we need to not make assumptions until things actually happen. We have many other municipal advisory councils that do the work that they have been asked to do. They are speaking for their community. They are offering resolutions for changes. And I think we need to give the same respect to any new municipal advisory group and not make any assumptions. And please, by all means, if you live in that area that we're about to possibly approve today, submit an application.
And I, I want to also mention, Gabe, that the bylaws are attached to this agenda item so that you can review them. And they're very similar to other municipal advisory council bylaws. And the other thing that's really special about these assemblies is yes, there is an appointed group to sit on the committee. There's typically five people with an alternate. But everybody that comes and participates has a voice. And every single person that lives within the designated area gets to vote and gets to speak and gets to participate. It's really more like a town hall. And so it's more successful if more people participate. So whether or not anybody is appointed as the five members to serve, the strength really is in who shows up and who's there every single meeting. And so I would just encourage everybody to participate because that's really how you get to some pretty amazing conversations.
Thank you for that. Next, we have Janine Pfeifer.
Hi, I'm actually here with myself, Janine Pfeifer, and with Ron Montez Senior, the tribal elder of Big Valley. So the only statement I have is that this is supposed to be a representative body for the community. No one in my circles heard about it until today and we are all resident within the area proposed. So my comment, which I also made online to the agenda item, is that I think much more public outreach needs to take place before this moves forward. And also changing the name of the area council to be Big Valley Area Council, as a number of supervisors have recommended, is a very good idea. And here's Ron.
Good morning. This is Ron Montez, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, elder council tribal historic preservation officer. I would like to say I support the, the name change to the Big Valley Area Council. And also that inclusivity is something that our tribal people have been seeking for many, many years. And so it has always been a stumbling block in our community here as well as around the lake. So in this time that there is a lot of now turning back towards our histories and looking for input from our tribal perspectives on many different areas, which we are expert on. We, we, when I say we, I speak for myself as well as our tribe. We're welcome any inclusiveness involved in decisions that affect our lives on a daily basis, as well as to provide security for our children who are coming up and have a seat at any table to discuss a lot of these different issues from a tribal perspective, which I believe is one of the most important areas that we need to have because it is completely foreign to people who don't completely understand the history of our tribal nations here. And would have a better understanding of who we are as a people and as a, a plus for this community. And also for right now, there is a real push to include us from the federal level, the state level. And to get it down in the local community level would be a very welcome change. Thank you.
Thank you both for your comments.
May I say something?
Please.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for that last comment. And I will speak for myself and not the steering committee. I recognize that inclusivity is a buzzword and gets thrown around a lot. And I understand, and I think our steering committee understands too, that it is a practice that needs to be central to everything and that with that comes mistakes and the humility necessary to continue to keep moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I, I just want to address Janine's comment. Because, because this, this meeting or this agenda item was posted on our agenda, but there wasn't a lot of public outreach before this because folks were just drafting the resolution and bylaws. And so that is the first step to bring it to the board. So it's kind of a, kind of a chicken and egg type of thing because it can't come without the community bringing it. So this is the first step is to adopt the resolution to begin this MAC. And the next step, which you have a press release that's going to be, we're going to, Matthew's going to take a look at it. And then we will actively broadcast this so that we can get the participation, so that we can get as many people applying for this position and understanding and showing up and participating. So it's, it's just the first step and recognizing that it wasn't broadly known that this was coming about until today.
Yeah. I just want to comment on that same thing and, you know, about how it gets started. It is the heavy lifting of the volunteers and it might just be five, six, seven, eight people in the community that commit themselves to show up. Because you'll find out it's a challenge to get the board seats filled, to get people to show up all the time, to look at those things. As you grow through this thing, you're going to find that out. Everybody has an opinion, but don't want to do the work, you know? So, you know, that is, it's, it's organic from the community. And I think that's what's great about these advisory committees. Folks like, you know, we're going to get this across the line. And then the outreach starts from there. And I've seen it grow to the Middletown area town halls, the meetings they had, some of the big community projects, I think, that were done, there are many of them. But I think one of the biggest ones came together with the 29 corridor study that was done with fixing the roads and what's wrong with the school, you know, all these. And that's been done, work done in 1415, you know, it was created in 09. So a lot of that organic stuff has happened, brings communities together and all communities, you know? You know, the tribe for Middletown area wasn't, you know, we were around, we heard about the conversation. Okay, great. But it's just you got to go, you got to commit yourself and show up. And it's, it's a great thing. These advisory committees are good. So the first thing I have to figure out is pay supporting you to get it on TV because people want that access too, but getting people to show up. Where are the meetings going to be held?
Right now, the Kelseyville Event Center.
Okay.
But.
Perfect.
Maybe that will be too small.
Yeah, well, we use, in Middletown, we use the little, little space there. And yeah, depending on what topic you got coming on, you know, believe me, our big one was Dollar General. Boy, we couldn't fill that building enough. So always conversations that are happening.
So I'm going to finish on Zoom. I know there's a comment in the chamber, but I'm going to finish with Zoom first. Betsy Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this conversation. I did submit detailed comments on the language used in the proposed resolution. I really encourage all of you to use municipal advisory council because that is the terminology called for in the statutory code, government code, section 31010. And you have the entire purpose of, excuse me, the entire purpose of a council that is formed by a mutual relationship between the legislative body and the public. It has some very important weight attached to it as opposed to a committee. So unifying that under a policy that I would, I had proposed to Mr. Crandall last year that is used in Mendocino County would be helpful. I know each of them has their own style and their own preferred language, but the legal foundation of those councils, I think, should bear some similarity at least. I really appreciate all the comments and all the input. The Riviera Area Plan, which was separately created from the big, from the Kelseyville Area Plan, lacks a municipal advisory council. Homeowners' associations are not governmental, as Supervisor Simon said. And, and there is no, no actual organization there. I encourage Supervisor Pisca to keep working on that one because they do have a separate character and they have a separate set of very severe wildfire prevention needs and evacuation needs and so forth. The, the other thing I wanted to mention is that there will be a connection between those two councils. Because if the Mount Conotoi has to evacuate, they're going to hit the Big Valley. And so I think you need to have a consideration of those mutual impacts. Just as the Lakeport Area Plan, when it was created, did not include the influence of the city of Lakeport. But it has a vital relationship over their water resources. The area plan update will have to be a mutual endeavor between the city and the Scots Valley group itself. And of course, you want to include all the tribes. And I think we should have a standard that says there would, you know, that at least one representative from the local tribe would be included. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And we did receive your email with the suggestions. And I know I'll be checking in with county council just to see if there was any specific changes that he approved of, but we'll get to that after we finish public comment. Next is Sarah Ryan.
Hi, good morning. Sarah Ryan, environmental director for the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. I just have a couple of comments on the bylaws as attached to the agenda item. The membership statement that says in order to vote in any election or action taken by KAC, persons must reside within the boundaries of the KAC map. I just want to point out that there are several members of Big Valley's tribal council who do not actually live on the rancheria. And so by making a, you know, a statement such as, such as that is limiting at least, you know, one of the sovereign nations within this area from identifying who they want to represent them. And just seems a bit too limiting. I agreed with Chair Sabatier's comments about the tribe being a part of this and having a seat on it. There's a lot that the Big Valley Rancheria does on a regular basis that. There's a lot that the Big Valley Rancheria does on a regular basis that is benefiting the whole area, including the economics and business associations of the tribe, as well as the environmental work and social work and other activities of the tribal government and the community itself. So in order to, you know, make sure that that there's good representation, the map should also be looked at. It seems a bit arbitrary because, as was pointed out, you know, the tribe has multiple parcels that or that are part of the rancheria that appear to not be making it as part of this map. And since it is a blended District Four, District Five creation, it's it just is odd to kind of split that area. Also, with the Scotts Valley Band of Palma Indians, the comment from one of the council members as, you know, they, the Scotts Valley Tribe did not, just from my experience, just speaking personally here, they had wanted to be a part of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, and they were not able to get a seat on that. And, you know, they have also have an interest in this area, so really hoping that that doesn't get limited either by how this statement of membership is is put in here. So my question is, would if this gets votes voted on as a yes today, does that mean this these bylaws stay as they are, or are there going to be other opportunities to to edit this?
Supervisor Piska.
So, thank you for all those comments, Sarah. This is we're forming this before the council has met. And so this is essentially a suggestion that we are adopting. We're adopting the resolution to create the MAC, and the bylaws are a starting point. Once the assembly starts to meet and they discuss and they want to make changes, they can absolutely be made. But we have to start somewhere, and so this is the starting point.
Or the starting point that's proposed. Yeah. Thank you for your comments. I believe we are done with Zoom. Any other comments from the public in the chamber?
Thank you. I'm John Jensen from Lake County News. As I was listening, I apologize I didn't come up earlier because this question bubbled up when Jessica said that the bylaws were an essential part of formation of this group. So my question is, can a MAC officially function without a ratified set of bylaws?
Well, we're passing the resolution right now, and
My question is, can a MAC take any action officially function without a set of bylaws?
I guess that would be a question for County Council.
Government Code, Section 31010 requires that the resolution and the MAC itself to have designated powers and duties, and that would relate to what's outlined in the bylaws as proposed.
And so if they want to adjust the bylaws
Do they not exist without bylaws then?
Well, if they want to change the bylaws, they can change the bylaws, come back here, and we can change the bylaws. If there's things that come up when they're meeting that they don't like or they want to amend, then we can come back here and change it.
Well, I'm just getting the policy though. You don't you don't need to weigh in.
I just
You don't need to weigh in.
Please.
My second question.
Please, please. I'm hold on, I want to respond to you. Here, we have a resolution, and within the resolution are bylaws. And as far I'm checking in with County Council, the resolution is approval of these bylaws to get the MAC initiated, which at that point, they can take action because there are bylaws that talks about membership, how the people can be appointed, how people can get kicked out, what's needed for a quorum, what's needed for a vote. All those things are in there to regulate the actions that can be taken by a MAC. It's not just a resolution that we want to approve a group. It's a resolution that includes the bylaws that have been put on on the agenda, correct?
That is correct, and that's all done under statute. Again, Government Code, Section 31010, to be more specific, Sub C and Sub F, which does require outlining rules, regulations, and procedures as may be necessary in connection with the establishment and operation of the MAC.
Okay. And then I want to check in with Vice Chair Crandall. Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, no, I was just saying that because I do have a municipal advisory committee that doesn't have bylaws, they operate off the resolution, so.
And did the resolution pass similarly to this where there were bylaws within that?
They were written in the resolution.
Oh, yeah. So same as this?
Right.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to bring some clarification to that.
So my second question, and that was inaccurate, but my second question is, there the proponents of the name change, pardon me, of the proponents of the MAC, some of them have seem to have expressed some real zeal and interest about the name change. And so I'm wondering what that relationship is. How is that connected, Jessica?
I'm not sure I understand.
I don't really understand the question either, but this was a proposed name. Well, I'm answering, this is all a proposal that we're going to approve and adopt. And so this was the proposed name, and there are folks here that wanted a different proposed name. And so we're seems to we seem to have consensus to change the name. It hasn't been created yet, so it's all been a proposal.
It was interesting that Lorna would credit you with the this, and she's a major proponent, she's the proponent for the name change. So just saying. We'll look into that.
Well, I want to say that she she credited me with starting this council, and that's all I did is invite people to start thinking about this as as the area plan update is unfolding. And so I've been asking, I've been talking to Sabrina for years. You know what'd be great in Kelseyville is a municipal advisory council. And it takes time for this to organically get established by the community, which is what happened, and Maria and I were invited to their first meeting when they started putting these ideas together, and and that's how it came about.
Can I add just one thing on behalf of the steering committee? And that is, I can say with confidence that the name change or whether for against has not been a part of the conversation of this particular group. It is literally to draft the resolution, start by and create bylaws, get us to this point, and see what happens. This isn't, someone earlier had a question about sort of nefarious intentions, and I don't take offense, I think that that's okay to ask, and that is not where the steering committee is operating from, not a single person on it.
And I just, I feel like I need to do a little bit of a timeout because we are looking at a specific change to the name of this advisory committee. And I know it's sensitive because of other activities happening. We need to separate those two things.
Yes.
I'm going to bring in Vice Chair Crandall has a town hall that meets in Clear Lake Oaks. It's not called Clear Lake Oaks. It's all-inclusive, therefore, it's the Eastern Region Town Hall. Same with the one that meets in Upper Lake, but it's not the Upper Lake Town Hall, it's the Western Region Town Hall. And same with the Surth, which is not just Lucerne, it's the central areas that are not identified in the other town halls. And so we're doing the same, is looking at inclusivity of a geographical area that does not just denote the Kelseyville Township area, it is so much more. And so I feel I need to separate those two conversations because I feel like we're bringing them together in ways that make this conversation more awkward than it needs to be.
Appreciate it.
This is very specific to the advisory council, which is not specific to a specific township. It just happens to be that the area plan is called the Kelseyville Area Plan, and that's where the conversation began, is using those boundaries, therefore, using the title that that boundary was created with. So I just felt the need to make that happen so that we can separate those two conversations. I do see a hand still on Zoom, not sure if Sarah Ryan didn't put her hand down or if there's another comment, if it's a new comment, if you can be brief.
Yes, a new comment. I had asked a question about the 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 membership aspect of it, and if this is open to a name change at this meeting, then is that portion open as well? Is that something that the the board can make a decision about?
So I think it's been discussed, and everything within the resolution is open. The resolution has not been approved, and it's a proposed resolution. What I would suggest, if I may, is make sure to apply because the applications will be the ones that denote who are members and who are not. And I know from my perspective, I can't speak for the rest, I'm going to be looking for diversity and inclusion to ensure that it's a cross-section of that community that this area represents. But also, my colleagues will decide on their own what who they feel are the appropriate members. But it's been brought up, and at this moment in time, I don't feel there is a consensus to change the membership, to have very specific seats and keeping it open. And it looks like Supervisor Green has a comment.
To your earlier comment, Sarah, the point is well-taken. So I don't have my Scotts Valley bylaws tattooed on my brain, but I do know we don't apply a strict residency test. We also open it up to business owners and community organizations that are active within the district. So my suggestion would be, I think we've already crossed the bridge about the name change, we could just bang that out today if that's all we did. But my suggestion is going to be if we can get consensus and we don't derail the area plan kickoff meeting, you know, let's take a week, let's clean it up, let's bring it back with the name change. But also, let's do a meet and confer and see if we want to apply a strict residency test or if we can open it up. Because I would be concerned, even though it's going to be a living document, I would be concerned about passing bylaws today that aren't crystal clear on the eligibility of people living on tribal lands or working on tribal lands within this proposed area. So if we're going to be serious about inclusivity, and I think we should, I think that portion of this resolution could benefit from a one-week pause to meet and confer and then bring back a tidier resolution that would still keep you on track for all the meetings you want to do, but would give another bite at the apple for those who didn't hear about this initially to come back and give any input if they want to. But, you know, I think that's an important point that I would not like to defer to the council to fix. I'd like us to fix it at the board level before we pass it.
I have a question for all of those, sorry, I'm the only one, that have town halls. Are you allowed to have people from outside of the area to join the town halls?
Yes. So how the Cobb area works is anybody can attend, and often, many people do, that don't live there. A lot of people will attend via Zoom, a lot of people watch the video, but when the assembly votes on something, it's the people that live there. And that was a decision that, you know, that group made because they that's what they felt was important. And so I don't know if you want to speak on yours?
Yes, I know in Central Region, there is an option. However, they all that are on are in Lucerne. There's just an option in case you don't get any participation, similar to East Region Town Hall, who had to adjust their bylaws because they couldn't get someone from the Clear Lake Oaks Keys to step onto there. I think there is now, but it's still open in case we don't, we have four people for like two years like we did there. Upper Lake, they're they've adjusted theirs as well, so but everybody that's on it in that in that one, I think, is still, I'd have to double check, but it's basically there's a residency requirement for Upper Lake, for Worth, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, well, well, there was Lake Pillsbury representation, but that became an issue as well. So that's why there's another seat that's just like a, that's why they adjusted that because they couldn't get someone to sit on that.
But specific seat membership versus the scope of the map of the area that it encompasses, everyone's within that map?
Right. And also, like, I think that was mentioned, I know that Robinson Rancheria and Habe Mitalela are included in the Worth area, the Elam Indian Colony is included in the Earth area as well. So just they're inside the map of that. So I maybe if you would adjust to have them inside the map of of your proposed Big Valley Advisory Committee, that might help too, just to ensure that the folks that live in that area are able to serve, so.
Can I respond to Supervisor Green?
Please.
I know it's outside of our jurisdiction, it's your decision as to the residency question. It was one we talked about pretty early on, and we, most of the discussion, but correct me if I'm wrong, most of the discussion was around concern that folks who do not live in the area, particularly those who maybe have second homes or just sort of have a passing connection to the community, would want to be super involved. And we so we felt like the sort of a line had to be drawn, and primary residence was it. That said, again, just a quick little poll, it sounds like we don't have a problem with waiting the week to really hammer out this particular piece. Our main concern is outreach and making sure the application window is as as large as possible while still being able to meet April 17. So that's the only little sticking point, and I'm not saying that's actually insurmountable in pushing things a week, just makes it a little tighter.
And Supervisor Simon, about your town hall?
Yeah, our town hall, obviously with the Fire District, we kind of overlap with Cobb Area Council, and we had a good meeting with Cobb Area. They're like, no, we're not going to change. So, yeah, obviously, Middletown Rancheria is part of that. We've, I don't see anything in the resolution or anything that limits. You know, what you're going to find out is you got to go and you got to participate. And whether you're just in the town hall in the audience or you're elected to get on the board, it's that participation side of it. I will say, in our area, did have a tribal member that was the chair of Math for a year. Boy, got hammered on that one even more. I was like yelled at twice or three times. But participation is a big part, and I don't see anything in here that limits it. With the change the board has made, adding District Four and District Five, that gives an opportunity for individuals from the tribal nations, from anywhere in the community there to go and serve on this. It's not someone that is selected, I just want to make that very clear. We just had a tribal member who was really interested, attended all the meetings, and ended up being, you know, representing the entire Math Board. And that's because they went and they participated, you know, and that's what these advisory committees really do. Folks who want to go and participate because, boy, it's complicated. The Brown Act is going to be something, it's a pain in the butt, I'll just be very honest with it. We have to know that here, but it is, it complicates things as much as it helps things out with these advisory committee. But I just want to make sure, I don't see anything, I'm prepared to move forward with this proposal today. Thought we had some great discussion, and I think the sooner we can get you off the ground, the better off that it's going to be in the long run. So those are my thoughts, and I don't see anything in here that excludes anybody or changes. This is a real community advisory board, and that's what I've seen throughout our time that I've had with the Middletown Area Board and even attending the Cobb Area Council is it's insurrection that, you know, or insurrection, I mean.
We did see
It's inception. I don't know why that one popped in there. The inception. So anyway, those are my thoughts on it, and I'm ready to move forward because I really, I think it's needed, so.
And I just want to, for clarification purposes, in Article III Membership, it says persons must reside within the boundaries of the Kelseyville Area Council map, which obviously we'll be changing the name based on the conversation we've had. So it is there where it residents is within the boundary. To be honest, I think that's the right way to do those things. I always am looking for District Two representation. While I have great faith that Alan Flora could represent Clear Lake well, he doesn't live in Clear Lake, and I would never ask him to represent District Two because that's not the appropriate thing for us to do. So I think the way it's written fits for what a town hall is meant to be. I understand that delineating specific membership seats to specific categories can make it absolutely difficult if you're not getting those people to apply and making it difficult to have quorums. So please, everybody that's listening that's within that area, submit your applications. We'll be making a decision soon, and it's up to us to make sure to make the right decision on the composition of what that council is going to look like. I have not closed public comment, and unfortunately, everyone is either getting back up or has their hands raised. Can we please limit it to one minute or less since for the folks that are repeating? I do have one non-repeat, but let's just start with the chamber.
I just wanted to say that Ron Montez from the, he's a Stark Preservation Officer, he spoke over Zoom, and he had asked about that in specific, if I'm not mistaken, that it's almost like like the tribe itself could send a representative that perhaps didn't live in the area, but because a lot of the tribal council and the members and the tribal committee don't necessarily live within the Big Valley area yet, could they come in and represent? So that is a fine point, but something I think that you should look at.
And I would suggest that I can go to all Lakeport City Council meetings. I can provide public comment and participate, but that doesn't give me the ability to run for that that membership seat. And I think that's that's kind of what we're following here. So just
Yeah, please keep it as a point of discussion.
Okay. Next, we'll go, and this one can get the three minutes. Margot Kimbara on Zoom.
Thank you for taking my comment. I have a, perhaps a solution to preserve the residency requirement for the advisory council and then yet.
Cast a wide net and.
Have representation from the tribal members. And that is, in recognition of sovereign nations, can the residency requirement be waived? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll wait to see if there's a conversation regarding that. I'm not quite sure how to answer, and let's go back to Gabe. One minute, please.
Sorry about that. I was just wondering, what is the date you need to have your application in by? Because I'm not sure if there's already a committee in place. It sounded like there was earlier, but I just wasn't, so is that going to be redone or how's that going to work?
So we have not received any applications because this council does not exist, but I'll let Supervisor Piska respond.
Sure. So yes, as soon as this resolution is adopted, then the application period will open. And we will probably have about two weeks to keep that open. We need to look at the dates to bring back when they would be due so that every application will be posted on the agenda the week before the meeting. So we've got to figure that timeline into. So I'm in favor of moving ahead today with just a couple minor changes that we talked about so that we have a longer time to receive applications. But the steering committee is just the group of people that decided this was important and drafted initially this resolution and bylaws. So if any of those people choose to apply, they'll, they will be considered along with everybody else that we receive applications from.
Thank you for that. All right, I'm going to close public comment. I do want to check in with County Council with the email that we received, just to check in with some of the questions that were asked about necessary items as part of the changes to the bylaws. I do agree, and I don't know if everyone else agrees, that it should be municipal advisory council, not municipal area council, just to stay with the same name. We'll, we'll check in with the board with that afterwards, but want to get to County Council and check in with Mr. Guentavano.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the only reference in the resolution, proposed resolution as currently drafted, the only reference made to municipal area council that I found was on the first recital of that proposed resolution. And your board may choose to amend the refer, that reference to state municipal advisory council, along with any other of the amendments that your board has taken into consideration.
Okay. There was nothing else on there that are legal, have legal ramifications or need changes?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to check in.
I just want to thank County Council for reviewing this several times. There were a lot of drafts that went back and forth, and so a lot of work did go into this, and I really appreciate you, Lloyd.
Yes, thank you very, very much, very, very, very much.
So there is one other thing in here, just to make sure that we're clear. When it talks about the, the area, it talks about the, I guess it's always K A C. So as long as we switch it to not K A C, based on our previous conversation, that should work. I just wanted to make sure it didn't talk about the Kelseyville area plan, the K A P. But I don't think it's on there. Let me do a quick search for it. Yeah, okay, so we're good. So at this moment, again, it's, we're back here at the board level, looking to see who wants to offer a resolution and what changes.
I will offer the resolution with the changes from Kelseyville area, is it council or committee?
Council.
Council, okay, that was the word. Change to Big Valley, Big Valley area, I'm sorry, Big Valley Advisory Council, Big Valley Advisory Council.
Yeah, B VAC.
B VAC. And, and then within the document to change the municipal advisory council, MAC.
And should we change the title of, I know it's, at least it's on the agenda, it's not on the title or within the document, but to say that it's a District Four, District Five, or is that unnecessary for us to mention?
For purposes of adopting the resolution, the resolution only needs to be offered as amended, but your board may elaborate. As far as the recommended action itself, it could be made to clarify that the offering of the resolution is for purposes of adopting the resolution, establishing the Big Valley Advisory Council as the municipal advisory council for the designated area stated in the resolution. So that was the recommended action for, for purposes of offering the resolution.
I, I offer the resolution as amended.
Okay, the resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye. Thank you for the dense conversation that we just had. That was important, and good luck.
When are we going to bring back so that we have an appointment date and a closing date for applications, so that we can make the April meeting?
Seventeenth.
April 17th, so.
April 2nd.
Yeah, if we came back April 2nd, that gives.
That's awesome.
That gives you two weeks to organize your meeting, get all the Brown Act stuff out of the way for posting in time, and letting the new members be able to have that time to put it on their calendars and hopefully.
So if anybody is interested in applying, you should have your application in by March 27th, right, Johanna?
Yeah, that one.
March 27th will be the deadline so that we can have it posted for the April 2nd meeting. And just to offer what County Council has offered all of the advisory councils is Brown Act lesson for everybody.
Oh, boy.
Love it.
All right, thank you very much for that. That concludes our timed items. We do have some on time, but it's 12:30, and we also have a potentially long closing, closed session. I'm not sure how long it will be. Do you guys want to power through or take a lunch? I would suggest a lunch.
Let's eat.
All right, let's come back at 1:30 PM to conclude open session.
Good job, y'all.
All right. Welcome back, everybody, to our regular meeting. We will continue where we left off. We're moving on to item 7.2, consideration of appointments to the Library Advisory Committee and the General Plan Advisory Committee. And so let's go ahead and start the conversation regarding the Library Advisory Committee. We have three separate applications. Are there any comments or questions regarding those three? So I will say that I am going to pull the Robert Taylor application at this moment in time and come back at a later time to fill that seat for District Two. If there's no further comments or questions, then let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Any comments regarding 7.2, Library Advisory Committee? Seeing none on Zoom and none in the chamber, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
I move that we approve Esther Wallace and Heidi Kraklau to.
You can go ahead.
To the Library Advisory Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, motion carries. Next, we have the continuation from what we had, I believe, a week ago, if not two weeks ago, for our General Plan Advisory Committee. We have a list of individuals for District One, District Two, and Water and Cannabis, I believe, from the top of my head. Any comments or questions regarding this item?
Just clarification, says we have five vacancies, Tribal, Cannabis, Water District, District One. So is it?
We do not have a tribal application.
Yeah, and so we just, we have three for District One.
Yes, and so we're going to have, we're going to have to pick one of those. In fact, I would even change my language and say, you need to pick.
Yeah, there you go. You know, obviously, I see some names very well-known, you know, on here, but, you know, I think for me, I'm going to go with District One will be Daniel Tyrell.
Okay.
Dan Tyrell.
And then I do have two for District Two, and I am going to choose the one that I sought out, which was Fon Williams, who is also the chair of the Planning Commission for the city of Clear Lake, therefore has some good experience with reviewing things like general plans and whatnot. Any further comments or questions?
And if I'm straying off here, let me know, but there's also going to be a committee at the local level too for the, for the area plans?
If you could please come up directly.
Just for clarification, just for clarification.
You need to remind us on what we approved and did not approve.
Yeah.
To date, Maria Turner, Community Development Director, to date, the board has appointed only members to a GPAC.
Okay.
We do not have clear plans to, to create local area plan advisory committees, though if the board would like to discuss that, we're always open to it.
Okay.
And that would be for a future conversation?
Yeah.
That is the state of the matter at this moment in time. So I will say one other comment before we move forward, and I hope this is taken well by my colleagues, and this includes me. I, I feel that we are making a mistake in what the composition of our committee looks like, and I'm going to stress on the looks like. This is a 2050 general plan. We're looking into the future. We've had many conversations, including visioning forums about equity, diversity, and inclusion, and this does not feel like a very inclusive committee to represent a cross-section of our community, whether geographically or whether demographically. And I, I think that we, obviously, we just had a conversation earlier regarding inclusivity. And when I review all of the names that will be and have been approved, there is one missing application, and that is tribal. And at the same time, the other 14 individuals that will have been approved have very similar I think we all need to push ourselves to do better, to ensure that we have our community being represented, and in fact, even seeking new individuals within our community so that we can get people to participate that maybe were apprehensive to participate or never felt that they would be chosen to participate, to expand our scope of diversity and participation in these types of things. So I just felt the need, as I went through this, that was striking to me. And again, I'm in the same boat. I am not excluding myself from saying we need to do better, but I just wanted to express that because I think it's one of those things that we, we talk about, and I know I've even been called out by my colleague, and here I am doing the same thing where we talk about it, but I'm not doing it. And so at this moment in time, I know that we have a timeline and that we need to get things going, so I do not want to restrict Director Turner from being able to move forward. So I will be approving what is on here, but I think that we all need to take a greater look at how we form committees to ensure that our community feels like they can participate no matter who they are, what they are, or where they might come from. And I'll stop there. And if there's any further comments, I'm open for it, or else I'll open it up to public comment.
I completely agree and definitely accept that challenge as we move forward. I'm hoping when we do our municipal advisory committee, when we start those there, that we get, you know, a different array of folks that were involved in the last time this happened. So appreciate, you know, the tribal application there, but we know that we have other minority groups that should be representative that have a lot of businesses in our area, and hopefully we get that community participation as we move through that process. So here you are, loud and clear.
Thank you, and I see no hands up in the, oh, sorry about that.
You know, and I know we've already come up with the, everything's in place for the, putting this advisory community together, but I, you know, and reaching out to different tribes. One thing that I will annotate and just note again for future discussions about adding tribes, when it comes to a county whole tribe, a lot of times, tribal governments feel as if they're, you know, there's seven governments. And so they, they, they see at times that the county will include the city with, you know, their specific representatives in certain things. And so in their, in the mind of a tribal government, they see themselves as like a city representative. So when sometimes there's like one representative to, for all seven, it gets to a position where like, who, you know? And then I know that in the past, when I first got on, there was just comments like, well, I mean, then we'll have like a 15-person board, you know, things like that. So I'm just giving the reality of why I see and know that there's reluctance at times from the tribal governments, that they, you know, I mean, we did do for the TID, there was two, right? And of course, that's all-inclusive for who has hotels and things like that. So that's, you know, another type of situation, but I just wanted to highlight that because I know, I don't think I've, I don't think I've heard it, have, I don't think it's been said here. I know it's been said in different forums that we've had with tribes, like at the Hitch, the Hitch forums and things like that. But when it comes to things like this, I think at times when we put together ad hoc committees or committees in general, when, when we look at representation, if it's just one tribal representative, there, it becomes a little jaded, if you will. So I just wanted to add that. But that, at the, right now, we still need one, and I'm reaching out, reached out again and reached out before, so we'll see if we'll have one here in the near future.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, and I think a good analogy is, I don't know that either city would feel comfortable with only one representing both cities and speaking for both cities, and I think each tribe is looking for that singular voice for that specific tribe. And so I'm going to have to agree with you on that, that it's, it's a struggle, but I think it can also be up to us to make those changes and figure out ways to make this happen. And again, appreciate the comment. I see no further hands up in the chamber or in the Zoom room, and so bringing it back to the board for action.
What was the, let's see here. Guess I'll try and get it here. So we have Carolyn Hillman for the agricultural or cannabis. Benjamin Murphy for Water District. Dan Tyrell for District One. And then, what's it, Deborah or?
Fon Williams.
Fon Williams for District Two, for the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I think I read out specifically what they were for.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. And just real quick, thank you very much for everybody that did apply. We had more people that applied than we had positions, so appreciate all those that both were selected and not selected. And I hope that those that were selected, that my comments were not offensive to you. Thank you. We're going to move on to our item 7.3, consideration of revisions to the employee appreciation and team-building policy. Looks like we have our auditor controller and our Deputy CAO Carter.
Bless you.
Hello, thank you, board. I, well, let's see. Certain aspects of the employee appreciation and team-building policies for discussion in the last few months, and I brought it up at a department head meeting, so I was then tasked with getting together with the department heads, getting all the feedback, and providing some updates for the board to review and hopefully approve. So attached to the item, there's the new policy as well as a red line, and I do want to note that there was a sentence that was added in later. So if you see a revised, that is the one where, where a sentence was removed. But I can go over the, the details of the changes. I'm not sure if you've read it or if you have any questions about any particular changes or if you want me to go through it all.
Just a quick question. The appropriate one that we're looking at is the corrected employee appreciation, where the line came back because previously it would complete, it was completely struck out.
So.
Because there's corrected, and then there's employee appreciation. I just want to make sure we're.
Let me highlight, so there is a, a sentence that was in the prior, the prior policy where it said that a list of suggested eats opportunities in Lake County is, is available from the administrative office. And so that's remnants of an old policy, that's not true anymore, so that's the sentence that is being taken out. That's not true anymore, so that's the sentence that is being taken out. So. Yeah, and I'm not sure which version they have in front of them, so I can't speak on that, but that is the one sentence that is not in the final version.
I just want to be clear as to what we are approving because there's four, well, two sets of attachments.
Right.
And so the one that says corrected.
If you look at the very end of the policy.
Yeah, the one that says corrected does not have that at all, and that's what you are looking for. Okay.
Yes, so the intention is for that not to be in there.
Okay. If there's a, and I apologize for making a suggestion, I'm obviously going to ask for my colleagues, whenever there's a new inclusion, it's kind of a surprise sometimes when we don't know that there's been an inclusion to an agenda item, when we've already been given the agenda to prepare for. So I know I didn't catch the corrected until way later. If it's possible to let us know there's been an update to an agenda item, just so that we can be made aware to review that item again, just to make sure that we are prepared for the meeting in the way that we should be prepared. Others can chime in if they want to give consensus to that, but that's just me to make sure that we're looking at the right thing.
Absolutely.
Okay, any comments or questions regarding that? Supervisor Green.
Just a question on the red line on the second page, no gift cards.
Right, well, and gift cards, ultimately, it's just turning it into cash, and then we can't tell what is purchased at that point. You can buy alcohol, you can buy cigarettes, so it's important, so it's it's important that we're able to tell how the funds are being spent. So gift cards are not allowed, no.
By state law or something like that? I'm just, I'm just curious, because if, I'm thinking of a Secret Santa party, oh, everyone go out and buy gifts for 25 bucks, you can exchange them all day long and all that, so, but.
The Secret Santa would be funded by the employees' own personal money. That wouldn't be the county taxpayer dollar purchasing a gift card to then be used in a way we can't trace.
Well, my county paycheck, I buy all kinds of things that I'm sure the county would not approve of.
Right, right. That's your earn, those are your earnings at that point.
Seems odd, thank you.
Seems right to me. We have a rule of gifting public funds. It is one thing to support our employee morale, which is what this policy is all about, but the idea of just providing gifts specific to individuals rather than the whole, as far as supporting them with a, I mean, up to $25 per employee to do some sort of celebration of saying thank you for all your hard work, I think that's, that's a standard business practice that you want to keep people excited about working for you, hear a thank you, hear an applause, all those things, but going to the point where they can go out and buy anything from Amazon on their own, that's, that's an absolute gift of public funds versus a thank you type of thing.
Right, and in this manner, we're making sure it's used for employee appreciation and team building, and we can make sure that that's how the funds, well, within reason, are being used. And so we did open up the language a little bit. There was some old thought that it had to be food, so for departments such as the library, where they have all these different branches, it's hard for them to get together and have a lunch all together, it's impossible really. So this lets them get a folio with a logo on it or a book bag or something that's appropriate for what they do and their staff. Yeah, we're not calling it eats anymore. I think that caused some confusion. It's the employee appreciation and team-building policy. And so this allows for food, it allows for it to be done on county premises or not, it allows for the department to create an event that works for them. So that's most of the updates, plus there is an additional $5 allocation, and that was the department head's wishes, so.
And obviously, there's an increase from $20 to $25 per employee. I don't see a maximum, because obviously, if you have 100 employees, then you get the 2,500.
Right.
If you have five employees, then you get the 125, so on and so forth. So I think that's just the way it works. Yeah, any other comment or question regarding these changes? Okay, open it up for the public. Any comments or questions regarding this item? I'm bringing it back to the Board.
Will we approve the proposed revisions to the employee appreciation and team-building policy?
County Council?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may, if I may add, for further clarification, the approval goes to the corrected, the attachment labeled corrected.
If you can speak into your microphone, I think that Sam is trying to get your voice quite loud. So.
So in addition.
There we are.
So just for further addition, your, as it relates to that motion, it would be the approval for the attached, attachment labeled corrected employee appreciation and team-building strategy revised?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Do we have? Let's go, is it possible to take up item 7.5? I don't see Director Jones.
Yes.
Online or in the room right at this moment.
Yes, I did send her an email, and I did send Pam any text. Stephen, do you mind retrieving?
Okay, well, at this point, let's go ahead and take up item 7.1, if the supervisors don't mind, just going over our weekly calendars and who's ready to start. Vice Chair Crandall.
So tomorrow, start with the gender review. I'll be going to RCRC tomorrow as well for our full Board meeting. And then North Shore Fire Meeting, I'll probably be attending via Zoom, and then another meeting that we have internally about Potter Valley Project with internal staff, that'll be another Zoom meeting. Thursday, I have like an office day, basically, trying to catch up on some of the meetings and discussions I need to have with staff. Same with Friday. Saturday, I'm going to Hot Cakes for Heroes, then Vision of Hope. I hope it's okay that I go to Hot Cakes for Heroes in your district.
Yeah.
And Vision of Hope, Vision of Hope is going to be at the NICE Event Center, and it's a, it's a nonprofit, and the North Shore Business Association is putting that together to help for, you know, folks with autism, and so it's a real, it's a real cool group that comes together. They also serve in my community as, on the municipal advisory committees as well, so you'll, you'll notice Thomas DeSieve is, he's, he's a big part of that, and so I want to make sure we support that. Let's see, and it's an open invite. They, they wanted me to invite everyone. I invited the Congressman, Assemblywoman, Senator, you know, and the Sheriff-elect and Sheriff, and whoever else. They wanted me to invite everybody if they could go, but that's just throwing that out there. Monday, CAO meeting, I have a meeting with Public Health, the new director, and then the visioning forum, that's, that's a go, right? Okay, so I'll have that, and then I'll be back here Tuesday.
Okay, tomorrow, I have my Executive Committee for NTO, my NICO ELU, and then the Home Harnay Meeting, and Thursday, Fire Safe Council, Geothermal Advisory, Resilient Communities Advisory, and Quarterly Check-In with OPR for the grant, and then Friday, Workforce Alliance. Are you coming to?
I'm going to come to Lakeport.
Okay. Yeah, we're here together for that. I'll probably have to, depending on how long that is, I have tree mortality task force, and then Soto Bay Corridor evacuation route, and then Monday, meeting with CAO and Risk Reduction Authority at, it looks like the, it's here in Lakeport, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Supervisor Green, are you ready?
More or less. Looks like I will be going to Area Planning Council and LTA tomorrow morning, so I won't be going to our normal Lakeport Shelter Update Zoom, but I know plenty of people who do attend that, so I'll follow up on that. Looks like I also have a Children's Council event at 1:00. Thursday, Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, we're going to be meeting, looks like 2:00 PM in Conference Room B. 4:00, I have Behavioral Health Advisory Board at Circle of Native Minds, and I think that's what I got for this week.
Okay, finished up today's meeting. Obviously, just a couple of meetings from last week, had the South Deal Committee meeting on Thursday with Caltrans, getting all the updates on the projects in Ford and Lake County. Also had a Space Committee meeting yesterday in the afternoon with Supervisor Crandall and the rest of the Space Committee, and then Board meeting today. I will be traveling out of town and returning on Thursday, so I will not make the Geothermal Advisory Committee meeting, and then I'll be here on Friday for the Workforce Alliance North Bay, and then Saturday, there is the Lower Lake Action Committee Chapino Dinner. I'll be attending that on Saturday night, and then obviously St. Patrick's Day Sunday, so get some corned beef for everybody, and then RIA meeting with Supervisor Pyska on Monday, and then returning here on the 19th.
All right. I have Agenda Review in the morning, I have APC LTA soon after that. A Lake Pillsbury check-in later in the afternoon, and I may sneak into the Children's Council, oops, 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 that afternoon as well. On Thursday, the Pick Count Committee will be discussing our final report, will, should be coming out in April. We just also, at the COC, recently approved our latest revision to the homelessness strategic plan, and I think between both the pick count and that strategic plan, that's been brought to the Board in the past to at least identify what it is that we're working on, so the Board can seek to find ways to align with that strategic plan, but I think that would be a good future agenda to bring to the Board and talk about the pick count and our new revised strategic plan, so that's on the plan. Then I'll be going to, spending the majority of the rest of my afternoon over at Woodland Community College. There will be a Women's History, not Women's History, it's a Women's in Education program that starts at 12:00, and I know that Patricia Barba, who is the interim Dean, will be there. Oh, I'm trying to go through the list off the top of my head. I believe Becky Salado, who is the Superintendent of Canockta Unified School District, will be there, Angela Quayar, who works for LCOE, and there's one more, I can't put my name, my finger on it, but that's always been a good event, so I want to be there and support that event and the school activities, and get to eat some good aromas food. Later on that evening, Yuba Community College School District will be having their Board of Trustees meeting at the campus here in Clear Lake, or there in Clear Lake, and I will be attending that. Lately, there's been some good activities, especially with the new president, Lizette Navarette, that started her position late December, early January, and they are just about to post for the new dean position, for a permanent position, and hiring other permanent full-time positions as well. So there seems to be some really good positive activity going on on that campus, and we all need our community colleges to be good community partners, so that's good news. On the 15th, there is a 90-day dash kickoff event that will be happening over in the Kelseyville Grace Church, and that's part of Hope Rising, so I'll be joining them, and later on that afternoon, I'll be involved in some conversations and sites for the LG Sonic group. And Saturday, I will also be at the Chapino. I, I got, I got suckered into buying some tickets, but I'm looking forward to the feast, and that's over at the Masonic Lodge, I believe. And then on Monday, I'll be meeting with the CAO as I get myself prepared for a meeting on the 19th, and that is all that I have, and it looks like we have Pam Samick from Human Resources, so let's go ahead and take up that item, and that would be item 7.5, consideration of updated hiring incentive policy to allow department heads to automatically qualify for the hiring incentive, and we have Ms. Samick and Deputy Director Carter. Deputy, sorry, I always get it wrong, I apologize. CAO Assistant Carter.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Pam Samick, Human Resources Director. Today, we are presenting to you changes to the hiring incentive to allow department heads to automatically qualify for the $10,000, well, hiring incentive, 10% of the annual rate, not to exceed $10,000. The other change we're adding to this is to make this payable in three payments, which will help with elections and retention, and they still must be employed for the two years, and those are the changes in today's proposal.
And I believe also if they leave prior to two years, it's a prorated.
Yes, thank you.
Amount that's returned to them.
Correct.
And that's specific to, again, the changes that you're speaking of for directors.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments or questions regarding this item? Mr. Assistant CAO Carter.
I just wanted to give you a hard time there. I just wanted to make it clear that the, the version that's being projected right now is the full final version, the one that was attached to the agenda was a prior version that is incorrect.
Okay, and this is, this is the version with the additions?
Correct.
Because I think the additions was always correct as far as that one specific section for department heads.
Correct, this is the, the same version, just without it being read, so it's the final version that will be implemented.
Thank you for that clarification. So we'll be approving the document as amended? Am I correct on that? I'm looking at Mr. Guintivano.
Yes, so it is consistent with the recommended action, and your Board may even specifically reference the final version that Assistant CAO Carter mentioned.
Okay, the Force is calling. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comments, since there's no comments from the supervisors, and if I can find Zoom. That's why, because we're sharing the screen. Gotcha. No worries. Let me get my participant list out. I see no hands. I see no hands here in the Board Chamber, so I'll bring it back to the Board. I do have a quick question before we take action. Some of these, this would apply to some of the positions that are currently being flown, because this is upon hiring, not upon flying the position. I just wanted to clarify that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Have we received applications for some of those positions currently?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Supervisor Green.
Yeah, I may be mixing and matching too many meetings, but I thought we were getting eligibility workers in here.
That's a part two.
Part two. And is this the policy where we discuss proration? Because I don't see a prorate in here.
Yes.
It's within the red line, if you look at the red line document.
Oh, I'm looking at the one that was just handed out here, so the one that's handed out, not correct?
No, it is, it's just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It is, so if you look at the second bullet point to the last, it says we'll be paid back on a prorated basis.
The employee must remain employed for the county for two years or repay the incentive on a prorated basis.
All right, I'll take your word for it.
Okay.
And changes for anything other than department heads will be in version two. So this changes only for department heads.
Are we going to put it on the shared screen?
Oh, she just took it down.
Oh, okay. I, I, sorry.
That's, that version is the one, because the original was never attached.
Yeah, appreciate that. Looking for action? So I, I, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt real quick. In thinking about the response that I just received, just to explain my vote, if we're already getting applications and we did not advertise, if I'm correct, to state that there would be a hiring incentive. there would be a hiring incentive, and we are already getting applications, I'm a little conflicted that we are looking to add something to the attraction of recruitment unless we already stated that there was going to be a hiring bonus in the flying of the positions. But if the case is that we did not advertise a hiring bonus and we're receiving applications, I almost feel like we can do that on a base, that I'm uncomfortable voting yes to just give more when there's already the attraction to get those applications.
Well, here's what we could do, because we have two department heads that are still running. All of them are running continuous, is we can, for the two that hit their first review date, we can go through those interviews. Should it not bring a qualified candidate, then we could add it back in for the two that are in first review.
Just to get an answer to my question, though, we did not fly those positions with a hiring bonus attached to the advertisement?
Did not, no, because I didn't have permission as of yet.
And I appreciate the potential solution that you offered. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Okay, thank you.
This is the motion document?
That's the original. The red line one.
Is there a clean version of the red line?
So all we're doing is approving that one section, which is about the department heads. Now, actually, let me ask Mr. Guintivano if he can help us with what our statement and action should be.
So your board may move to approve the updated hiring incentive policy to allow department heads to automatically qualify for the hiring incentive in accordance with the version that Assistant CAO Carter presented before your board today.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Nay. Motion carries. And so.
Sorry, may I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
That is with the clarifier for the two positions that already hit first review.
I think that.
They won't?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. No. So what was stated was this is upon hiring, so until we hire, this would affect any and all director positions that we have been flying, because this is a hiring incentive that is provided upon hiring, not upon flying the position. If I read and understood correctly, based on the previous question and the previous answer. And I apologize for the interruption.
It's upon hiring. It is upon hiring, based on the red line versions as presented, as finalized in Assistant CAO Carter's presentation of what was presented before your board on screen.
Okay. I think that clarifies for you. And thank you, Ms. Samick, for your presentation. Okay. And I see that we have Director Jones with us, so we're going to go ahead and go back and take up item 7.4, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Adventist Health, St. Helena and Vallejo for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalization in the amount of $3 million for fiscal years 2326. Director Jones.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, great. So these are reimbursable services through Medi-Cal or Medicare, depending. Adventist Vallejo and St. Helena Hospital is one of the hospitals to which we refer patients in need of these services the most. I would say between them and Heritage Oaks, we do a lot, a majority. And I wish, I actually, in the future, I'd love to bring a pie chart. I just got an idea for myself, but I'd love to show you actually where a lot of our folks go. So look for that here in the future, but this is one of the big, big people because they are close to us, and we do try to keep people closer. It is a large dollar amount because hospitalizations are expensive. However, again, for Medicaid and Medi-Cal beneficiaries and for private insurance as well, these services are reimbursable.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any comments or questions regarding this item? So I do have some quick questions. I know that most of them can easily be answered, but just a quick question. Did those two facilities expand their services, or is it us that better understand how we can utilize their services? Because I know that it wasn't $3 million before. It was a lot less. I think it was in the $300,000 range. Just kind of wanted to check in and see if we are being, if we are seeing a massive increase in the number of folks that they're able to serve for Lake County.
That's a great question. The answer is twofold. The first part is that we're seeing an increase in general for people who are being acutely hospitalized for psychiatric reasons, which is on trend, actually, with the rest of the state. It's not a great statistic, but there you have it. And annually, even, even looking annually, year to year, to see who takes our patients, year to year will change. And so Adventist has taken more of our patients than maybe other hospital systems, but again, we're seeing an increased trend across the board of hospitalizations.
Okay, now I appreciate the response. And then my last question, I think also has an obvious answer, but just to make sure, this is $3 million that is reimbursable for those services provided?
I am not going, I do not believe that the full amount of $3 million is reimbursable. The county does have some share of cost, but it would be, it would be a significant amount depending on that person's aid code.
Okay. Thank you again for the response. Any other comments or questions? Open it up for the public. Any comments or questions from the public? Bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consideration of agreement between the County of Lake and Adventist Health, St. Helena and Vallejo for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalization in the amount of $3 million for fiscal years 2023 through 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, do we need to amend?
Just add that and authorize the chair to sign.
Still second.
All right. Sorry, we cut you, we cut you short on that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much, Director Jones. And I believe that completes all of our open session. I don't believe I've missed anything. If that's the case, we will move on to our closed session where we have two items. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, title, county librarian. 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, title, social services director. And with that, we are going to go into closed session.